I'm calling to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January 12, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacobs, for all call, please.
Mayor Alahuza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiottis.
Yes, here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by the city attorney, following with the pledge of allegiance, if you please stand.
Father, we come humbly before you to ask for divine guidance and help in our deliberations this evening. Bless the members of the commission and the citizens that are present. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. Thus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our BOC meeting. Please be advised that the item number four, the special event Movies in the Park, has been pulled from the agenda. Also, ladies and gentlemen, in order to have a productive meetings in a professional, with professionalism and based on the code, city code, all public comments must be directed only to the chair of the meeting in a professional manner with respect without a personal tax. And thank you for your cooperation. We are now going to the public comments of the items that were not going to be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll be given four minutes.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. A rise in objection to the Anclot project again. And speaking with many people since the last meeting, it's been brought to my attention that nobody even talked about the fact that the hurricane evacuation bottleneck is right there in front of that project. So you'd be dumping another 800-plus cars onto the already bottleneck northbound evacuation route. And you know, they're not gonna, if it's a two-car family, they're not gonna leave one car there because it's right on the river. They would lose it. So they're gonna be taking them both. Create a huge nightmare. On top of all the other problems that we talked about, you gotta have two entrances. You can't have one ingress and egress because if a fire takes place in there and there's an accident at the gate, those people will burn to death.
Okay.
And then you also had the 50, right? You have to get a waiver if there's 50, but there's way more than 50. It's 400. That's like eight times, it's like eight waivers you'd be giving them for that. And I also brought it to your attention that one of the experts at the last meeting made some demonstrably false statements, things that you know are not true. Now, it seems to me that we take an oath for a reason. I've been speaking to several attorneys about this. You know, lies are tearing this country apart. But I noticed about some of the lies that are being told throughout the nation. Those people that were telling lies, when they got in the court, they didn't repeat those lies to the judge because they were under oath. I find that very fascinating. Those people took the oath seriously. So they would tell lies in front of cameras, but they wouldn't tell their lies in front of the judge because they took that oath seriously. They knew it would impact them in some way. So if you, at least, you gotta clarify with this person. Did maybe she forget that she knew that there was a serious proposal? Did this person maybe not remember the dozens of emails that were sent about this issue directly to that person, copied on them? Because we sent them to all the members of the Friends of the Anclot, and this expert happened to be one of them, happened to be one of us at that time. So this person got copied on emails talking about the trust for public land, helping to purchase the land. I personally gave Budget Advisory Committee a present, a presentation to the Budget Advisory Committee. I personally gave that. I think it was 2012.
Sir, may I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, please.
This information on the Anclot Harbors, it will not be taken into consideration because it's related to the continuing meeting and all the public comments have been completed.
But I can speak about it tonight because it's not on the agenda tonight, correct?
Right. But you can, I just want to tell you that will not be under consideration because the public comments have been completed.
Well, all I can say is that it's something that you ought to think about, whether you can take my comments into consideration or not. I mean, are we gonna just let people lie under oath? Or are we going to actually hold them accountable and at least question them and say, why did you say this thing? Why would you do that? It's the least you could do. So find out, well, what's going on here? This has nothing to do with the person's name. Anybody who says that they're an expert comes up and says something that is blatantly not true, you think you might want to find out why they said that. Maybe it's because they didn't do their due diligence and give the developer all the information because I called the guy myself. And I said, you might want to find out if these two, you know, this attorney and this, this professional are actually telling you all the facts because this has a long history and you might not know how much opposition you're gonna get. So much opposition that Walmart couldn't even afford to fight that battle. And that's what I told that gentleman from Morgan Group. Said, you better have deep pockets because this thing's gonna go on a long time and these experts cost you a lot of money. I'm trying to do you a favor. So that's what I told. He was kind enough to offer me a sandwich the night of the meeting. Anyway, so that's pretty much what I have to say about that. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. And the mayor is correct, this is for public comments for items that are not on the agenda. And being that the mayor was out of town for a while, he's had probably a hard time reading a lot of the voluminous material that's been submitted. So for Mr. Alahuza and the rest of the board, I wish to read some things to you. As I mentioned at the meeting the other night, the day of the meeting, I submitted four pages of things from comprehensive plan that were related to this project. First, out of the future land use element, goal one, protect the cultural heritage, the historic resources, tourist economy, and environmental settings of Tarpon Springs. Objective one, ensure that all development is reviewed for compatibility with the cultural heritage, historic resources, tourist-oriented economy, and impact upon natural resources and the environmental setting of Tarpon Springs. Further in the land use element, there is a section, environmental and passive recreation. Objective 1-5, preserve environmentally sensitive and endangered lands for passive recreation. Policy 151, the city shall promote preservation of environmentally sensitive and scenic areas for passive recreational use. 152, land designated as recreation, open space by the future land use map shall be protected from the establishment or expansion of incompatible uses. 153, preserve environmentally sensitive open spaces in perpetuity through conservation easements. Policy 154, kayak and canoe launches shall include stable paths to provide ease of access from launch areas to loading and unloading. I'm gonna pause for a moment from that part of the comp plan to go into what I requested from Renee, and she responded about what recreation open space allows. Recreation, recreation open space is intended for areas appropriate to be used for open space and recreational purposes. These uses can be public or private, natural or man-made, active or passive. The maximum floor area ratio shall be .25. The maximum pervious service ratio shall be .45. Primary uses, public, private, open space, public, private park, public recreation facility, public beach and water access, golf course and clubhouse. So, public recreation facility is a wide thing, and a golf course and clubhouse. They were hesitant to put a conservation easement onto the land they're willing to set aside. So maybe in the future, they decide to put in a little mini golf course, or a softball field, or a soccer field, or some other type of recreation being a facility. That's not compatible. I go back to the concert, comp plan. Under the coastal zone element, the effect of future land use upon natural resources. The combined analysis of existing vegetative cover and existing land use and zoning clearly identify the future needs to preserve and conserve the remaining areas of native vegetation that function as wildlife habitat, aquifer recharge areas, and the benefit, the water quality of the adjacent estuarine areas. The city has very few areas of upland vegetation remaining. As development pressures continue on remaining vacant lands, it is critical to strike a balance between private property rights and preserving remaining wildlife habitat and natural resources. Of particular importance for wildlife habitat are areas of xeric oak and pine located in close proximity to the coastal area. Estuarine, salt marsh, and mangrove forests, which provide wildlife habitat, benefit water quality by filtration of upland runoff, and dissipate wave energy.
Delakis, your time has expired.
I have two people here who will donate their time for me. That will give me an additional four minutes.
You go ahead and identify their names, please.
Tom and Veronica Weller. And if you need their address, they would be glad to provide that to you. Okay, where was I? Benefit water quality by filtration of upland runoff and dissipate wave energy during severe storm events should be preserved. Those areas of the city which contain environmentally sensitive uplands or wetlands, mostly the latter, should be preserved in their natural state. All wetlands which are located along the Anclot River should be designated for preservation. Number four, impacts of future land use master plans in the existing city comprehensive plan project continuing increases in population to the year 2030. These increases can be expected to create additional natural resource management problems. Loss of sensitive upland habitat, xeric hammock, sand pine communities, long leaf pine, turkey oak communities, decline in wildlife populations in natural areas within the city limits caused by increased human use of the areas. Then further into the coastal plan is the endangered or threatened species and species of concern. Tarpon Springs contain habitats utilized or which on occasion may be utilized, may be on occasion utilized by several endangered species. Nesting locations of the southern bald eagle, eastern brown pelican, and heron nesting colonies were supplied by the natural audubon side and the FFWC. The, I can go on, and it talks about all the different species that are there. The analysis, the various upland communities in the study are more subject to developmental pressure than our wetland areas due to the more stringent regulations protecting the latter. Certain upland communities in the study are rapidly disappearing throughout the state. These are the sand pine, the long leaf pine, xeric oak, and the xeric oak communities. These provide valuable wildlife habitat and harbor several endangered or threatened species of special concern. And under coastal management goals, this goal one, the city shall preserve, protect, and enhance the natural and functional characteristics of the coastal planning area. Protect and improve the natural resources of all wetlands and areas of significant upland habitat as defined in the future land use policy. Use policy 1112 to assess the impact upon wildlife in order to evaluate and eliminate and minimize adverse impacts. Those are the parts of the coastal, of the comp plan I wanted to highlight for you. Now, anybody have an idea what this is? This is tree grindings from trees, oaks and such. These are feathers from a bird under a tree that had died. Y'all talk about trying to preserve 1.5 acres of wetland on the Hayes Road Park, and you talk about changing out a couple of species of trees for the landscaping, but you forget to neglect the thousand of trees that will be destroyed. You will see, if you destroy those trees, piles of this, 20 feet high, probably three, four, or five of them, and you will find many feathers. Lastly, I do want to close with this aspect. This is a copy of an article from the Sun Sentinel from August 20, 2019, and it shows a view of the Boynton Beach land that is approved for hundreds of apartments and dozens of townhomes. That's land sold this month for more than 19.5 million, according to county records. Land that is approved for luxury apartments was negotiated by ARA Newmarket Investment Advisory Firm, negotiated eighteen and a half acre sale for construction to Cortina of Boynton Village, Boynton Village and Town Center. The new owners are Texas-based Morgan Group and Boston-based Rockpoint Group. In May, the city commission signed off on Cortina, which will have seven four-story apartment buildings with 378 units. There will also be 55 two-story townhomes around, throughout 11 buildings along Old Boynton Beach Boulevard. The developer will kick in $500,000 to enlarge the city's dog park at 800 Renaissance Common Boulevard.
Mr. Delakis, your edition time has expired.
I just want you to remember, they want you to buy stuff, the road, and they're giving away to other communities. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Do we have any other public comments? Here none. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
We have received no emails.
Thank you. Mr. Jobb, do we have any, anyone on Zoom wants to speak?
If anyone is on Zoom who would like to speak on items not to be discussed, not on this agenda, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. We do have several raised hands, and I'll allow the first one in, sir.
Would you please connect him?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. This is Randy Myers, 1389 Sail Harbor. My topic is regarding the proposed development project, the Anclot Harbor. Kim Myers is on a separate call in phone and lasts to me two minutes, so I request six minutes of speak time.
Sorry, who'd you say you have?
Kim Myers. She's also calling in via Zoom, I believe.
If Kim can raise her hand, she can identify herself and she'll give you your two minutes. She's connecting now. If you could unmute yourself and...
Hello?
Yes, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Myers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to register my request that you deny progressing this, this development. My reasons are as follows, and I have seven of them. Number one, the river location, the wildlife refuge, and the environmental impact are all severely negative and well documented and discussed, so I won't, I won't spend time here discussing those. With regards to, right, a number two I have with regards to the Hayes Road second entrance or exit idea. If you in, in Tarpon Springs, city staff have not already done so, please take 20 minutes and drive the length of Jasmine Road to the Brick Circle. Observe and walk down the dirt haze driveway and its neighbors. Meander south on Jasmine Road. Observe the 90-degree curves and the jog in the road between those two curves. The obvious embedded safety issues that include blind spots at every curve and stop sign, the lack of any sidewalk, low spots in the road that flood, even when it's not raining, you could see that evidence. You'll see it whenever you go, and there is no shoulder. I ask you to pause, pull over a few times to observe cars that race down this part of Jasmine Road as a result of its country road characteristics. And I ask you to do the same, to go on to Spruce, to and from the light on 19, go to Jasmine, to and from the light on Tarpon, go down to the traffic turning on and off of Melon Road onto Keystone. You'll be stunned, stunned by the consistency of speed of the majority of drivers that assume these shortcuts in our racing to the lights. If you do this, you will come to your own conclusion, and you will avoid spending $150,000 or more in studies to assess this staff ideas of a second entrance off of Hayes Rose. Just punt this. It's a nonstarter. My item number three is with regards to the two exit requirement for developments of greater than 50 units, waiving this requirement for this 404-unit development could and will be seen as negligence. Number four, gated entrances would obviously have an impact on the throughput of traffic coming off of 19 and will have to be considered in any traffic study. We have a new normal. Significantly more deliveries, driver services, truck traffic, bike traffic, PTSA bus traffic are going to plug up gated entryways with traffic backed up onto US 19, creating confusion for drivers on that road. Then you pile on the new school bus stops, points that we're gonna have to be located there for, because we have just put in 404 additional units on that piece of the road. Common sense and all of our experiences, all of our experiences tell us that the engineering bookwork and math is not near reflective of reality. US 19 is still an F-rated road regardless of recent legislation saying that it doesn't matter. If you use any of the existing turning lanes on 19, anywhere on 19, but specifically here in North County and on that part of the road, your car shudders as traffic whizzes by in both directions at speeds well in excess of the posted speed. If you take walks like I do, that includes US 19 and/or Tarpon Keystone Road, as I do, you do so with a sense of fear, knowing that cars whizzing by you well in excess of the posted speeds can easily and do easily veer off the road into side rails, sidewalks, and property. The remains of the damage done there varies every week. I feel it and I see it because I walk those paths. Traffic studies need to consider the real flow speed of traffic. Number five, the proposed elevation of this property is insufficient to ecological legislation. To meet those requirements, the impact on the property will be vastly more significant than that currently defined by the applicant, their contracted engineering and planning teams, as well as the Department of Transportation. The land is going to have to be raised higher. More acres are going to be impacted. Number six, the Walmart property has been and continues to be an excellent location for park space that can be enjoyed by all residents. Let space is already important under the old normal. We have a new normal. There's a new cultural and work norms for open spaces and broad access and minimum peak travel times. These are going to be even more important. A park can be economically competitive with intense development options. Funding for, funding support already does exist and will only get greater under these new norms as the federal, US, state, county, and city governments begin to recognize the importance of these properties. Our world is changing for the long term. We all see it. There's a lot of existing buildings and structures that are vacant now, or, and a lot more that will be in the near future in this part of the county as a result of our new normal. These can be developed into housing and should be developed into housing if more housing is really necessary. Our civil and our city planners and our developers need to consider alternate development of this space. Thank you guys for considering all of this. Thank you for denying this application, and thanks for leading Tarpon Springs into our new normal. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jobb, don't have anybody else wishing to speak?
I'll allow the next person in.
Hello?
Yes, if you could state your name and address for the record?
I'm Mark Washburn, 124 East Lake Drive in Tarpon Springs. Also, the president of Safe Tarpon Springs Organization. Just a quick, again, we fully support the Tarpon Springs City Commission and the mayor to consider this to be turned into park space. There's already funding coming from multiple different sources that can cover a large portion of the purchase price. And it's, it's really the jewel of Tarpon Springs. It's the gateway from people heading from north to south and south to north. It's in direct alignment with the sponge docks, which will bring more people to that as well. And as it being a park with a boat ramp, kayak launches will be the perfect place for people to enjoy a boat ride to the sponge docks. for people to enjoy a boat ride to the sponge docks so they can eat it. One of the many restaurants that allow tie-ups. So highly, again, support the idea of turning it into a park. And also, as a park, it only requires a single entrance, and also the traffic patterns are perfectly in line with the rated F section there of U S Highway nineteen. The busiest time would be on the weekends when there's no rush hour traffic. And on weekdays during rush hour traffic, it'll be the least busy going in and out of a park. So once again, I hope the decision is made to consider that to be a park, an open space, and that's it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll allow the next person in. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Boniatis Kulyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. These are all my own thoughts and expressions. Anybody donating their time is simply donating their time for me to be speaking. I will be having Maria Kulyas, Otto Biltris, and Annie Samarcus. Mr. Jobb, do you want to verify Maria Kulyas and Otto Biltris are on the line?
If Ms. Biltris can raise her hand, and I'll allow them both in to give their name and address for the record.
Maria Kulyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue, Tarpon Springs, Florida.
Thank you.
Otto Biltris, twelve seventy-two Jasmine Lake Drive, Tarpon Springs.
Okay, I will begin. Welcome back, citizens of Tarpon Springs. I want to wish everyone a happy new year. Now that twenty twenty is behind us, we can focus on working harder for you Tarponites in twenty twenty-one. I want to revisit the December fifteenth, twenty twenty B O C meeting. There were a few comments that caught my attention and will be catalysts of pursuing a better Tarpon Springs in twenty twenty-one. The first quote, "If you work for the people, be upfront with the people." That was my mother, Maria Kulyas, and I can't tell you how happy I was. She learned how to use Zoom. I get my fight from her, believe that. The second quote, "There's a lot of backdoor dealing going on, a lot of dark room stuff, and I don't know if it rises to the level of corruption, but it's not right. I don't know what happened. It has to be changed." We did a lot of that over the years, getting people elected, getting certain employees replaced, and it's going to have to be done again. That was from former Commissioner Chris Habauski. "I want the commission to know in two weeks Attorney Jared Theophilopoulos will be here to address the board during public comments regarding Epiphany. Now, the citizens of Tarpon Springs want answers, Mayor, about your COVID double standard cover-up. I see you didn't isolate for fourteen days as the CDC requires. You clearly do what you want."
Please stop for a second. I'd like to ask the person on the order who's holding the sign to go in the back of the auditorium. So it won't be in a distraction. Please go in the back of the auditorium. Thank you very much. Shimon, you too, please go back. We don't need to have any destruction, please.
Can I begin again?
Please remove the sign and put it in the back. Miss Samarcus.
Standing at the podium and speaking when the mayor's telling her not to speak.
Continue, Mr. Kulyas. Thank you.
I just think that's a real disappointment and a real violation of First Amendment rights and freedom of speech. It's not only happening here but across the country, but I will start again. "How was your trip to Golemlos, Greece over the holidays? Now I know why you didn't want to have the Anclot Harbor meeting until January seventh. You planned on attending the Anclot Harbor City Hall meeting without quarantining. You mentioned people had already made plans, but in fact, it was only your plans that caused the delay. I thought it was selfish and inconsiderate of you. You had every intention on attending Epiphany without quarantining after arriving back in the States on January fourth. For the record, there was more people at the boat parade than Epiphany. We were lucky to have four hundred people. Now we tied the city manager and chief of police because I know they were aware of you going to Greece, and they too weren't going to force you to quarantine. And they too weren't going to force you to quarantine. Here, the city manager, chief, and mayor were concerned about shutting down Epiphany, and they were going to let the mayor attend after he used his diplomatic privilege to escape the island of Golemlos COVID lockdown. Talk about privilege. Talk about double standards. You all weren't going to let sixteen and seventeen-year-olds die, and in the end, it was God's will that allowed a sixteen-year-old to retrieve the cross. Our city manager and chief are going to put their hand on it, and the puppet mayor had to play along. So who's going to tell on who? Did the city manager know of your travels? Did the chief know? Did the city manager know, and the chief didn't? Or neither of them knew, and you didn't notify them? Someone's got to say something. You can't ignore this. This is another reason why the city manager should be fired. Chief Kochev retires in March, and the mayor resigned. They intentionally misled and lied to the citizens of Tarpon Springs, and we're going to let the mayor attend Epiphany. The mayor even said in his Kalimian interview, he had to be back so he could attend Epiphany. We want a statement from all three. Now, let's talk about Anclot Harbors. I heard Morgan Group was passing out champagne bottles as if they already won. I won't mention names, but I will say positions. If the vice mayor interrupts me stating, "We all know who you're talking about," he will be speculating himself. The company, Morgan Group, presented, stated that turning lanes to and from Anclot Harbors were similar to those at Reload Shooting Range in Anderson Park. Those lanes do not compare to a complex that's going to be closed and gated. And I also want to remind you guys up and down Palm Harbor and Clearwater and U S nineteen, all those accidents that happen when they try to let a car through the lane, crossover, and the third and fourth lane doesn't, the third and fourth lane outside doesn't stop and hits. And I want to say, Mayor, do you remember when I emailed the board on December eleventh to release all drone footage relating to the traffic studies? And what did our city staff do? They went and shot video drone footage on December fourteenth from seven ten A M. to seven fifty A M. and completely ignored the eight A M. Pasco rush. That's unacceptable, Mayor. I wanted them to release drone footage prior to my December eleventh request and not last-second drone footage that was shot and submitted the day before the December fifteenth B O C meeting. I was expecting drone footage to come from Morgan Group and not from our own planning and zoning department. It's quite clear our own city staff, once they get this project approved and rush it through, to whoever's approval. The drone footage in the A M. isn't during peak times either, and it's also during the times of COVID. Everyone knows Pasco rush hour south into Tarpon Springs starts from eight A M. into nine A M., and the planning zoning staff didn't film that time intentionally. They waited to hear from me via email, and I have no experience with traffic or flying drones whatsoever. Just a thought, and it's a fact that the city staff didn't do this study or survey of drone video until after I sent the email request. And here we are talking about the biggest apartment complex development in the history of Tarpon Springs. I also want to point out the developer's attorney, who wanted to connect Attorney Graham and her traffic specialists as working together in the past. I would also ask, I would like to ask and assume there's a working relationship and connection between our planning and zoning director and Joel Prevenzano, the F D O T's expert for our area. I mean, our director did work for the county prior, and we should ask if they've worked together in the past. I want to focus on Morgan Group's attorney. He's very good at words, and he's going to use his lingo to justify this development and fall short, just like he did when he represented Walmart for the same property. As much as Morgan Group's attorney will tell you to take emotion out of your decision in his closing arguments, it is he who is the one emotionally vested into this project as a second time to finish business. He got the blueprint from the lawsuit from Walmart. Well, after Friday, no one's going to use that attorney in Tarpon Springs for land use again. We Tarponites are going to reject these corporate and personal interest sellouts and their plan of a concrete jungle. We aren't letting Texas foreign invaders develop our Tarpon Springs land and take that last frontier of beauty away from our city. Michael Born, the V P of Morgan Group, could find another place in Florida to destroy. He's a Texan who wants to destroy our beautiful Florida nature. Morgan Group's attorney will claim to have fulfilled the burden of proof when he won't, and their team never did. Commission, no matter how many experts speak on both sides, it's your duty to protect and preserve Tarpon Springs. The citizens presented a strong case and found plenty of holes in Morgan Group's case. If Morgan Group was too cheap to pay for a road that will cost them five hundred K. for a second entrance, then can you imagine how cheap their work and quality of the buildings will be? And at this point, the road is a no-go. We want nothing to do with that property. They showed us a few poor pictures of their complexes, of other complexes, but like I asked them before in the emails, you all saw they couldn't provide any proof of an apartment complex that was built on the river on the north border of a city like ours in Tarpon Springs. We gave them plenty of time. They've never done this before, and Tarpon Springs shouldn't be an experiment for them to attempt this development. Morgan Group never came prepared, and I hope that reflects in your decision, Commission, to vote in favor of Tarponites. So please, Commission, for the citizens, reject this project because it's not Tarpon Springs. It's not us. Mr. Armstrong will say, "Base your decision on the competent substantial evidence, but there won't be enough evidence to turn that property into a concrete jungle." Please, Commission, no matter how much you dislike me or our opposing views on topics, I believe we all understand what's best for Tarpon Springs. Please vote no on Anclot Harbor. And if Morgan Group tries to sue the city because you courageously said no, there would be plenty of blame to go around. And Mayor, I promise moving forward, we citizens are going to question everything this government does. This is our city. We will defend it. We're not going to run this town your way, not the city manager's way, not the commissioner's way, not the developers' way, but we're going to run this town the Tarpon way with transparency, honesty, and integrity. Thank you, Commission.
Would you please connect the next person?
We do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We now go into our presentations, item number one, which is the city clerk's office design face, staff report.
Yes, Bob Rowerson will be giving this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you, guys, for parking mic, for queuing up the slides. I'm here tonight to give you a status update on the design of the new clerk and collector's office building. With me tonight is Chris Rollins. He's the lead architect from Long and Associates, the firm that's designing the project for us. And he'll walk you through the design and has a short video rendering to show you as well, which is pretty cool. Overall, the design is proceeding smoothly. We're approaching a fifty percent design milestone now, and so we felt the project was ready for, to show it to the board and to the public and get input. The only hiccup so far is the discovery of some subsurface voids on the site that we'll want to fill with compaction grouting before we advertise for bids. Cost impact on this is about five or six percent of the construction cost and currently within range of our construction budget estimate. And I can give you more details on that later if desired, but for now, let me turn it over to Chris Rollins, and he'll tell you more about the design.
Good evening. I'm Chris Rollins, architect with Long and Associates Architects and Engineers. Like Bob said, we can give you a little presentation of the city clerk's office so far with a design update. So just a little project scope overview. It's renovating or replacing a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot clerk's office currently, and we're proposing to demolish it. And all of the great ideas that we can have with that, enhanced security, universal accessibility, improved working conditions, and space to accommodate employees comfortably. So the existing conditions, we brought our entire team out to the site, architects, mechanical engineers, structural engineers, to take a look at the existing conditions. We saw that the building itself, as we looked through documents and walked through the building, it's ongoing a lot of renovations and changes over the time, and it's very old building that needs to be updated. So we went through some preliminary plan ideas, and we showed this initial rendering at the very beginning of the project just to get an idea of what's possible, what could be done, what could be a nice enhancement for the clerk's office, something that really ties into the fabric of the community and the neighborhood. And we talked with the staff. We talked with the stakeholders. We walked through a couple of different options. This one option gives entry at the northwest corner, drive-through service at the south, employee entry at the bottom right corner. And you see those squares that are dotted in red. That's for the future ability to move to an expansion on the second floor. So those are two staircases and an elevator, all items. As well as in the middle of the plan, there's a circle that's red. That's a steel column for the future expansion to a second floor. So that was the initial option, and we moved to a second option where we have this vertical access for the public entry coming in from the north. And they are greeted there at the lobby, and the employees are working there in the open space concept there in the middle, and the drive-throughs again at the south. But as we started to work through this, we had to keep in mind that future expansion to the second floor with the two staircases, as well as a future elevator. And what we came to is that the fact that the proportion of moving or having a second floor is only three thousand square feet addition that you get for a second floor. So all the gymnastics that come along with that, the structural implications, the cost implications, the altered aesthetics, constructability issues, really for the proportion of only getting three thousand square feet, we thought it may be best to recommend moving your expansion out to the west. You gain more square foot, you don't gain more square footage, but you have an option of gaining square footage without having to do all the gymnastics, going to two staircases, the structural implications, constructability issues, et cetera. So with that, we also had to move to the site plan and provide a couple of options for the different site plans that could be shown on the site. So right now, when you demolish a building, you get the option of putting back new parking to the north and renovating the parking to the south. Currently, there's sixty-three existing parking spaces. Now, the idea is that at the very south, you see right this row right here. There's some young oaks and palm trees that live down there. But if we don't renovate and we don't, or if we keep those trees in place, we can only get a maximum of thirty-one spaces back. So we went to a second option. We said, okay, well, if we are to remove those trees and of course provide compensation by putting back the same amount of square inches in new trees that are be younger and mature over time, we're able to get fifty-two parking spaces. So you don't get all the way to sixty-three, but you get pretty close. So all along the way, our standard design process is to design with leak-conscious design. We're not going to make it a platinum or gold certified building, but we keep all of those ideas in mind as we design when it comes to indoor air quality, natural daylight, daylight harvesting, H V A C system sizing. All those items are standard for us in order to give you the best, most green-conscious, environmentally conscious design and building that you can provide. So with that, I'm going to show you a little video. So that was the kind of nuts and bolts of everything, but this is the real nice stuff. We've been able to really come about with some great modeling software that we have, so you can kind of see firsthand what we've done with the site, what we've done with the building, and how it's come along so far. Give us one second as we pull that up. So here you see on the very far left is Ring Avenue. This is a south parking lot that's been renovated. Again, you get some nice parking islands in there, ability to have some nice landscape. As you zip around the building, we're seeing the north end of it where employees can be sitting outside. They have a couple shaded canopies, protect them from, of course, rain and the sun. And as you walk around the building, really what we've done here is provided a building that, again, it matches this city hall that we're in right now. And as you walk around the building, really what we've done here is provided a building that again, it matches this city hall that we're in right now. With the cornice and the brickwork, we really wanted to provide something that looks more like a little sister, a little brother, rather than a sore thumb that sticks out. And of course, with this being the south side and the west side you just saw, we have some nice overhangs to really protect from the glazing. Just for the heat gain, keeping that down to make sure you're saving on money as much as you can. Again, this is a nice employee area where they can be outside, they can have a nice picnic area and entryway with the very front of it, again mimicking what we see at the front facade of this building here. And as we move in, again, we're just approaching the 50% design, so nothing is set in stone. But these are just some ideas where we've put in some nice finishes. We provided this being a little public conference area, an employee walks in and somebody may have an issue, they can go into that room and speak. This is within the main office area. We're going to go to a couple of office spaces. They've got nice lighting, cut down on the amount of lighting you have to use throughout the building, bring in some nice daylight. And throughout the space, we created, you know, some nice angular design lighting features, just to spice it up a little bit, give something that's nice and interesting, a good workspace, a good work environment. And next we're going to go into the break room. Again, nice day lighting in there, large windows. And we're going to turn, we're going to see the open office space, looking back through the entryway into the main reception. And actually, one of my favorite spots is the last spot of it, again, with the nice day lighting, you get this copy workroom that's really lit up. And you know, daylight does wonders for not only the natural body, but just for the building itself. And that's it. So as Bob mentioned before, we are approaching 50% design with the project and like I said, nothing set in stone, but this is where we come to so far with the design. I'll open up for any questions if you have any.
Mr. Rollins, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
This is a 50% design. What do you have to do to get the other 50%?
Really, we have to go through the 60% TRC review. So we'll sit down, we'll get to the next 10%, we'll present it in front of the staff and whoever needs to review it. And once we get their comments and we're full speed ahead to the full design, that'll take us about March or April, we'll be 100% complete.
Relocating the building to the new location, we're not losing any parking spaces, do we?
I'm sorry, you're not going to lose?
By relocating the building to a different place. We're not losing any parking spaces, do we?
There are some parking spaces that are lost currently. Like I said, there were 63 that are existing. And to get the building where it's at now, the maximum we can get to is 52. So it's about 11 lost parking spaces. But there's a lot of pervious, a lot of landscaping and green area that is gained, actually.
But we also have some parking, additional parking across the street.
That's true.
Thank you. And I'm glad that Mr. Jacobs got involved with the design and I'd like to ask Mr. Jacobs, are you were are you were happy with for future views of of your future growth?
Oh, we are. We've worked closely together and he's put up with some of our changes, but we're very happy with the layout.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Irene, I've got just a question for you from a design side. I see that there's like four, at least four offices and seven cubicles.
There's actually two offices for myself and the deputy city clerk. The other cubicles, we've allowed for, I think it was part of the commission as well to allow for future growth. We currently have seven total employees, but it would allow for 12 employees for future.
Perfect, okay. I might have a wrong or not an updated site plan, but the ones I'm looking at has four offices.
Well, I think those were the original options. It was an older option. And we changed some things around. Splitting the collection side from the, we aligned the collection, we wanted the collection side to be lined up and not at an angle as the one in the backup. So the collection side's working on one side and the clerk's side is working on the other.
Okay, got it. There is, so I had a trip this fall up to Franklin, Tennessee and Irene printed some of these pictures off and I think Bob as well. I do think it's a good idea to have it close to city hall from a design standpoint. I do think there's an opportunity to add a little more architectural, I don't know if you want to call it flair, but architectural character to the building and the front, on the top facade piece. And so since it's a brick building, there's some options just to I'm trying to think, lack of better words, but jog the bricks out a little bit and a unique design standpoint. It's something that we've seen in Tarpon too. The SunTrust Bank has that as well in downtown Tarpon. So I mean, I would think it's, it would be a good idea to add a little more character to the top part of the facade of the clerk's office, just something to add a little more uniqueness and character to it. So it is set apart a little bit from city hall. And then the other aspect is I've seen this in signs. If you look in the last page. It's below one of the windows and it's you see all the bricks are horizontal, but then below one of the windows, it's, I guess you would call herringbone pattern. I've, I can't see, these ones are actually zoomed in, but that is it, I think. I just can't, I can't see from the side. A herringbone pattern is it breaks up the straight up and down. The straight horizontal brick. And I've seen that used where it looks like the sign of the clerk's office is going to be on the side of the building. So I've seen this multiple times where they do that pattern as the background and border the sign. And so then you can put the metal letters in that herringbone area too. So it sets it apart a little bit, kind of frames it in and creates a different area for it. So that would be my suggestion, just to throw a little more character into the building. I think overall the design looks really well, inside the model looked really well too. I was impressed by that. And I'm looking forward to moving forward with this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, Bob, on the video that we saw. I know that there's the yellowish building back here closer to Gross. That's not going to be touched, right?
We don't have any plans as part of this project to do anything with that. There may be plans elsewhere, but not as part of this project.
It's not going anywhere.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I don't have any questions. Other than that, I think it looks good. It's kind of a long, long time overdue for the city clerk and collector's office. So I think it'll be nice and I can appreciate Vice Mayor Carr's suggestion with some of these areas in which we can just, you know, push it to the max and really have the nicest project possible, some of the design elements that he pointed out. So I'll leave that up to you to try and implement, but as far as I'm concerned, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Commission.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just while it's fresh in my head, I also like the idea of maybe framing the name of the building or getting a little bit more creative as long as it's, you know, within reasonable costs. I don't know if there'd be any additional costs to maybe put the bricks in a different pattern to certain places. But I do like that idea. What's the, what's the cost difference between option A and option B? And are you looking for guidance from us tonight, which one we want to go with?
No, we've spoken with the staff and we've decided to, I'm sorry, is it option A or option B on the parking or option A, option B on the design of the layout?
Option A, option B on the parking.
Option A, option B on the parking. Right now, we have not explored the cost differences there. That's something for a civil engineer to chase down. I guess looking for, yeah, we will be looking for your input on option A, option B, just knowing that the parking count is in question as well as the tree removal will be in question.
Okay. And how many existing trees are in place? I know it can't be that many, but.
Looked when I drove by, it's about six to eight trees.
Okay. And so let's say we went with option B where the existing trees are removed and new trees are planted for compensation. Is there any room to increase the tree count? So let's say we take out six trees, would there be any room on those islands to, you know, plant 12 of them?
I definitely think there would be. You're gaining about 2,700 square feet of pervious or landscape area compared to right now, if you walk out there, it's all nearly asphalt, asphalt or rock. So in the new design, you're gaining 2,000, 2,700 square feet. So there's plenty of area for new trees.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely feel more comfortable with option B if it's going to lead to more trees being there in the long run. I'd like to learn a little bit more about the cost before I, you know, firm up anything. But is the, is the difference that you expect between option A and option B kind of negligible in terms of cost or is it going to be something that's kind of major?
I would say because you're getting more landscape area that it's going to be lower in cost. So keeping all that asphalt out there and having to put back and re-mill it's going to be additional cost.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's, it looks like a wonderful project so far and it's moving along and, and I know that there's a lot more work that needs to be done. So I just had some general questions. Could you put the floor plan back up with the office space? Okay, that's it. The street side is the part that's on the left. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, which side?
The street side.
Yes, it is. Ring Avenue is on the left, yes.
And what are those spaces?
From north to south, we've got two office spaces and there's file storage and then there's a break room. So if you're talking on the left facade, the north is office, south of that's office, south of that would be file storage and south of that's a break room.
I think in our initial discussions, and this is fairly, I mean, for all intensive purposes at street level, this building. I think it might be elevated a little bit above street level, but I was a little concerned. Unlike our building here where we're up three or four feet, there's some potential of security issues with a car, let's say ramming into the side of the building. And I talked about something along the line of a, some kind of a barrier or some feature that would try and discourage that. And I don't know whether that would be part of the architectural plan, but I think it would be very important if the staff could have another conversation on, I don't want to drive that, that's up to you and the staff. And I think if our city clerk feels that it's needed, then that would be something that we could talk about as far as a commission. But, but I wouldn't have any objection to that and I think it would be a safe thing to do. The ADA, could you walk through the ADA, how the access is and where the parking for that would be?
Sure. Just north of that big red arrow is, there are two handicap parking spaces. So they would be directly accessible to that sidewalk that leads right into the building. We're trying to keep any, you know, ramps or changes in elevation minimal. So really there, they would have a smooth access from car to access aisle to sidewalk right into the building.
There's a punch feature of the ADA door, it'll be an ADA door.
Yes.
Okay. And there's no step in the building anywhere else. Everything is at one level.
Correct.
Great. I know there was some discussion as far as exterior features that we talked about earlier. How, I know we're in a historic building and I don't know how that works with historic preservation, whether we have to satisfy those guidelines or anything. Is that part of this equation at all? So pretty much we could have something completely independent of the way this building looks. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. It's not included in the boundaries of the historic building.
Yeah. Well, I know the architects, they like to make it look like it's part of the same complex and I very much appreciate that and that would be my preference as well. So and then you mentioned gaining pervious. So the retention, I think we briefly talked about that. There's no additional retention that's needed and we're good to go on all of that.
That's correct.
Great. That sounds very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. LaCurse, what kind of direction do you need for that in this end?
I don't know, Bob, do you think anything else? And I know we talked about the bricks and maybe some arrangements with the bricks and, and the other items. I think, I don't think there's anything else we need, is there?
No, I think that's it. We're feeling pretty good about this design and we appreciate the board's feedback on it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to public comments on this item. If you have any comments, please come forward and state your name and address with the record.
Here to Wax, 514 Ashland Avenue. It's about time. How many years we've watched Irene, Michelle, Crystal, Carol, all them girls having to put buckets on the, on the ledges there to collect the rain that was dropping when we had heavy rain. The only things that I observed and I would like to see if there's flushed out is two. When you do your landscaping, I know you're trying to preserve as many parking spaces as you have, but I do want to point out on the southwest corner of Pine and Ring, there is a parking lot there that is potentially usable for the excess flow. But more importantly, I know in times that I've come to the city hall, parking under a tree is a valuable aspect. Cause you know how it beats, the sun beats down and gets hot. So if you can find a tree to park under, makes a cool car when you come back. Secondly, and maybe in some ways more importantly, back in the back there by Irene's office, there's a vault. I don't know if that's in the plans to be remaining, but it is a historic aspect and it's also a safety feature for important city documents, past and present. So if it's not being incorporated to be used there, I would like to see that something be done to incorporate that and keep that, because I didn't hear anything about that in any of the designs. And those are my comments with regards to this and otherwise it does look nice. You are keeping it to look like the original city hall high school building. And maybe at some point we can look at what to do with the old police department buildings that are basically for storage now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here now, Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
We've received no emails.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Moving on and we go to consent agenda. Item number two is satisfaction release of links. Number three is the attorney fees, Traskadinal invoice January 5th, 2021. Number four has been pulled. Number five, A, we've seen award of file number 160076, desk C, desk CM, lighting street, CD on installation and repair. Seat of St. Petersburg at FQ number 5966. And B is the word file number 210081, C, AM, routine maintenance and repairs for maintaining the highway lining system, Florida Department of Transportation contract number E2Z74-R0. And number six is ratified increase to file number 170084, CCM, lighting service, services holiday display. And number seven is the file number 210077, CJL copiers lease through the State of Florida contract number 1406047-440000 NASPO 19ACS. Any of the items that you'd like to pull? I hear none. The chair will detain the motion.
The move, second.
Are there any commission comments?
I just have a quick comment, Mayor. I have a quick comment.
You have?
Yeah, a comment. I, I think the city looked great during the holiday with the lights. I just want to make that comment. I see the ratification to increase that a little bit. So I just want to say good job to the city. I've really saw a lot of residents and visitors interact with the large bulbs, I guess, the bulb tree that we've had. So I just want to say good job to the staff and figuring that out, looking forward to next year and some options. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, Ms. Jacobs, do we have any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do you have anyone online wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir.
On a Yachtie School, yes, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Uh, I'm referring to item six for the holiday, the holiday display. And I just want to remind the city and the city manager to um, as the year comes up next year, to set aside money for um, holiday stuff as well as as a big Christmas tree for Dorset Park and Harrison Street. As well as uh, signed decorations for the telephone poles going up there on the future seasons moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do you have anybody else wishing to speak?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Thank you. End roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuesis?
Yes, next is item number eight, direction on Sponge Docks Gateway Signs Staff Report.
Yes, this is one of the many items we have tonight that was uh, supposed to be done in December. But because the agenda is uh, it's been pushed. At last time we talked, we had uh, some diagrams that our person in cultural affairs, Nick Romano, took ideas from a survey we did and some ideas we had heard from commissioners and gave us something to look at. Um, we've got those here for you, plus a new design that he worked on um, today that you have in the backup. I'm sure Commissioner Vaticiottis may talk about in the future. So the direction we have tonight, Bob Robertson is here waiting for direction on uh, how we're gonna, if we're, if we're ready to move forward tonight about the procurement process and going out to bid. Before we get there, um, again, we we need a product to go out to bid for. So hopefully, one of these depictions with some adjustments or a combination of them can be given tonight. So we can move forward because I'm sure many are anxious to move forward that. Obviously, there's other directions we go more input, but we've got some great designs here. Um, and hopefully, we're looking at uh, at your input of one that we get a consensus on to move forward with. And then Bob is here to discuss uh, how to move forward. Diane Wood is on, is on Zoom in case we have questions of the survey. Remember, the Public Art Committee uh, was involved at this at the beginning and did some survey to get some thoughts. So we've got all those things available to you and uh, the people available to you. So we're waiting for direction on how, when, and what to move forward with um, for our gateway signage at the docks.
Thank you, Mr. Lacuris. Um, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask uh, Mrs. Diane Wood. Ms. Diane Wood, can you tell us about the survey? How was the survey distributed? How the survey was, uh, how many people, they actually received the survey and what response have we got?
Yes, sir. Um, good evening to you all. The survey was created by uh, the Public Art Committee to gather input regarding the design of the Sponge Docks Gateway Sign as tasked by the Board of Commissioners. It was sent out via Tarpon Arts Constant Contact Subscription. Um, and that was done on September 3rd of 2020. And it was sent to 320 email addresses. Those email addresses were from Karen Lemon's email list of 320 emails of um, businesses and small businesses in Tarpon Springs. Of the 320 emails that were sent, what we can tell with that software of Constant Contact is 127 of them were actually opened. And 46 were clicked on to go to the survey. However, only 18 of the 320 people actually completed the survey. But what we did in addition to that is we sent out, we put on the same link um, of the survey. It was distributed electronically. It was put on the city website, on Tarpon Arts website. It was also on Explore Tarpon Springs website. Uh, we put it on City Facebook, Tarpon Arts Facebook, Explore Tarpon Springs Facebook, and also Tarpon Springs Business Happenings. So we had all of that social media going on. And then the people who linked, who looked at it actually shared it. So we got quite a bit of distribution that way. This whole survey was live through October 9th, which was about 35 days. And the results are as follows. Actually, 142 people completed the survey. Only 18 were from the Constant Contact email that was sent. And 124 people were actually accessed the survey via the link from one of the websites or forwarded email or a social media source or input from the paper surveys received. Now, what also happened during that time when it was distributed electronically, it was also sent out via a paper survey. And that was handed out, um, 100 paper surveys were printed and 59 were handed out uh, through Bob Robertson's office. It was um, but there are some, because there are some multiple business owners um, on the Sponge Docks. Actually, um, there were 59 handed out altogether. So um, that's basically um, how it was distributed. And those questions were, you know, kind of vetted by um, the city staff as well as the Public Art Committee. And then you have that um, survey results. I believe you have a copy of that. Are there any other questions, Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ms. Wood. Uh, we have 13 renderings. Which rendering got the most votes? Can you tell us which?
Well, they didn't actually, they didn't actually vote on those renderings. What we were doing with the survey um, questions is we were asking them different design elements. And so based on the compilation of the design elements from the survey, what we did is we created some mockups, some ideas basically of designs based on the responses that we got from the survey now. And these are just really very basic conceptual things, um, you know, based on the design elements that were the most popular from the survey. Just, you know, to give an idea, because a lot of people are visual. And just to kind of give them a concept, you know, when you read it in a survey, you know, the responses, it's easier if you can see it. You know, in paper, so, um, and see actual an image that you can modify however you want.
Do you think if the uh, the renderings was actually provided to the survey, people be able to see a, uh, they have a better picture of what they're selecting? What and what advice are they giving us?
I believe we can send them out um, pictorially as well, if you wanted to do a second survey.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Diane, thank, uh, thank you to um, your staff member who put these together. I thought they did a good job.
Thank you.
Just some ideas. So, looking at this and evaluating the surveys and um, some other aspects. I I do like the combination of um, number one, number seven, and number eight. Number one really dictates, or dictates the brick uh, portion of it. Uh, incorporates a fish and the historic Tarpon Springs Sponge Docks. Uh, I think the combination of historic Sponge Docks is probably better than historic Tarpon Springs Sponge Docks. But myself, it doesn't really matter. I I'm good with either of those um, comments or phrases. If you look at number seven, this has a a brick base and it has a lot more character uh, in the metal area. Um, and it also incorporates the the sponger helmet. Uh, I do think it's important to incorporate the sponger helmet uh, along with the tarpon fish. And or a sponger um, along with a uh, some type of boat and lighthouse. When you look at number eight, I I do like this one um, because it ultimately, you have the structure of the sign itself and then you have a secondary uh, where there's like a lighthouse and a boat on the backside of it. So you could have some additional pieces uh, in the sign itself. So it has a little more uniqueness to it. But if I had to make a decision, I would say number seven I like the best. Because it does have that brick base, it has a metal top. And I think it's important to have the brick base because it really, uh, it talks about the historicness of the Sponge Docks. Mr. Pappas, that owns the Sponge Exchange, sent an email to us later in the day, um, also expressed that. Just saying it's timeless and will carry the bricks throughout, which are something that they had in the Sponge Exchange and a lot of the original buildings in the Sponge Docks. I thought that was a a pretty good insight. And so something also with the base, it would be good to see like a tumble brick or an aged brick of some sort. Uh, so it doesn't look like a brand new sign. Um, and then when we look at the the metals, it it would be good to have some type of powder coated metal. Something that could last um, up there that's not going to rust or fade um, overall and it's going to protect the metalwork as well. So um, if I had to pick though tonight, I would say a combination between number seven and number one. And uh, I I do like the idea of adding um, some additional pieces in the backside of it, like a lighthouse or a boat of some sort as well.
Keep in mind, um, Vice Mayor Carr, that um, you know, we could work with you all individually to get the the elements, the design elements that you like from each of the designs and incorporate them into something that then you could all, you know, take a look at collectively, you know, what each of you, you know, all, each of your preferences are if you if you choose to do that.
Yeah, thank you. And also, I think, Mark, you asked, um, I I like option number two, the design build. So it gives the uh, a professional the chance to design it and also someone that knows how to build it as well. Um, and I'm assuming that would come back to the the board for the decision. I'm not really sure how we would go about bidding that. But I do like the design build option where um, the same person designing it would obtain the architectural and engineering plans and then also can construct it as well. I think that's the best approach. And then lights being incorporated, uh, the sponge, or like the the lighthouse lights, they do look pretty cool. I think it's a nice touch.
Commissioner Carr, let me uh, clarify and let me ask you, you said one, seven, eight, and two?
No, one, I'm sorry, uh, number two is, so in the memorandum, there's option one, two, and three. Design bid build, design build, and request RFP. You see this here, Mayor? You see the memorandum? So that's, that's what I was saying, option number two is design build. But it wasn't option number two in the backup. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tera Pani?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you uh, for everybody who's been involved in this. Diane, if you're still there, thanks for all your efforts with the uh, surveys to the Sponge Docks merchants and also uh, other members of the community. So for me tonight, I I'm, I I'd like to see this issue, or not this issue, but this initiative move move forward. My recollection, recollection, don't hold me exactly to this, but I think it was the previous board that picked this uh, discussion item back up. So that's, that's approaching two years um, since we started to re-talk about this entrance. Um, and I think that we've been sensitive and have tried to garner as much public input as possible. But at a certain point, you know, we need to stop talking about it and and actually go to design build. So as far as that goes, um, I'm in favor of option one or two as it relates to design build uh, or design bid build or design build. I'm a little, I'm a little confused on where the bidding would come in if we were to go with option two. At what, at what point uh, we get some actual costs associated with it? And given that, I would probably lean a little bit more towards option one, which would be design bid build. Which still incorporates the 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 building aspects to the design aspect, which I think is important as Vice Mayor mentioned. So for me, it's pretty simple. I'm a fan of option one. I have been. And that's what I'd like to see us move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you to Karen and Diane and all your staff. I know it was a lot of hard work getting the survey out there, trying to get as much participation as possible. So really appreciate your guys' efforts. For me, I'd also like to see option one or two when it comes to the design bid build or design build. I just think it, they're the two best options in terms of moving this forward uh, and getting this done in a timely manner. So I I do like option one or two. And we can discuss that, I guess, as a board, what your preferences will be. Uh, as far as the gates go um, and the actual signage, um, and the survey results kind of corroborate this. I'm I'm really liking the sponge diver sign uh, aspect of it. I think the sponge diver helmet on option one, uh, and really most of the options, I think that's really good. I just, I want to make sure that's really pronounced. Uh, as far as the actual designs go, I I really like option one. I think it's traditional. I think it's classic. I'm I'm also willing, I guess, I I just seeing 13 for the first time right now. But I really like the 13 overhang, the historic sponge dock. Instead of historic Tarpon Springs Sponge Docks, I think the historic Sponge Docks overhang looks a little bit nicer. Um, and I also do like the the lighthouse lights on 13 as opposed to maybe necessarily number one. But those are two minor details. If I had to just choose one based off the actual designs in front of us, I would choose option one. But I do like the lights of 13 and the actual um, historic Sponge Docks signage on 13 a little bit better. So again, I'm I'm for the design bid build or the design build, uh, whichever one moves us along the fastest. And as far as the actual signage goes, I like uh, one the best.
Commissioner Lacuris?
Thank you, Mayor. And uh, I've got Ms. Woods and uh, Nick Mateo, I believe, uh, to thank for number 12 and number 13. That was something I'd asked them just to, uh, through the city manager to uh, kind of put something together, which was a takeoff of number one. To um, kind of pick up a couple of features that I thought were missing in the whole package. Something a little more traditional, um, stucco, white, blue, mosaic on the front, not necessarily what you see there. That's from um, oh, I forgot who I borrowed, but uh, just something that actually, if you took a closer look at it, that's the Tarpon Springs uh, sponge boat. But it would be a mosaic of something. And then the uh, got uh, Ms. Joan Jennings to thank for the lights on top. Uh, she's the chairperson of the Public Arts Committee who changed out the ones from number one and added these two on number 13. The idea also, and I'm glad Commissioner Donovan picked up on it, was that arch with the Sponge Docks in historic. I think one of the objectives and biggest complaints that we had heard when this whole matter was being discussed was the fact that we couldn't identify the uh, people driving didn't know where the Sponge Docks were. And so this would certainly help in that regard. But I I think that um, I was looking for something to clearly delineate uh, that they are at the Sponge Docks. I think the idea of putting Tarpon Springs there um, is a little repetitive. I mean, I would hope somebody knows that they're in Tarpon Springs um, and they're looking for the Sponge Docks. Also, I I really think that we're overworking the tarpon emblem a bit. I don't think that that's a brand or anything. I think it's just being overworked. You see that in, in uh, on t-shirts, you see that everywhere, you see that um, you know, in other towns and and we seem to be playing it up. So I I think something that is a little more tuned um, to the culture, the ethnic and the history of the Sponge Docks would be better. The only, the only problem I'm having overall, and that that's just the comments here, as far as the options go, I I want to save those other comments for a second. Mr. Lacuris, what what do we mean by, I I know the bid and I know the construction. But what do we mean by design of either one or two?
Bob, will you go to, Bob's been working with procurement to give these two examples, uh, I mean, three examples. Tell, explain to the board the differences.
Thank you. Uh, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. Commissioner, your question is, um, let me just ask you a repeat.
By design, I I know, um, for example, number three is an RFP. And you would be uh, allowing that person to have full latitude with what they would bring back, um, notwithstanding what you see one through 13. But what, what does the number one and two, where do they start in the design? Is that something that the city provides them? And then they take that concept and flesh it out in an actual structural design?
Well, that's up to us and it's really trying to, what we're trying to get to tonight is if we want to specify one or two or three of these and say, and 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 hire a team, a firm, that can design these signs, do the structural work and everything you're talking about.
Well, that's up to us, and it's really trying to, what we're trying to get to tonight is if we want to specify one or two or three of these and say, and, and hire a team, a firm, that can design these signs, do the structural work and everything you're talking about. And create a set of contract documents for bidding, that's what we're trying to decide, if we want to go that route now, we can hire someone to do that. And I would suggest we do an RFQ to hire someone to do that for us. Or we can use one of our own architects, ER type firms that we have already in a contract.
What I'm saying is the creative aspect of the design.
Right, so we would have multiple rounds of creative input. It's not, tonight, we're not saying, I'm not going to pin you to number thirteen and say, okay, you tell me, you're saying, Bob, go get a design and come back and design number thirteen. That's not where we go, that's jumping the gun. I think what we would do is, we'd hire a firm that's designing something that picks up all these aspects that the public has told us they want, and we bring that back to you and the public to get input on. And perhaps we provide multiple options that are variants of one or two of the designs that are preferred by the board.
I mean, I, I guess the idea would be that they would go back to the public as well.
Certainly, yeah, I definitely would see that as part of the process.
Okay.
We're not done with that.
I'm glad you're saying that, because I, that kind of clarifies it, I'm not too crazy about just giving something like this to a designer and say, okay, bring us something back based on one, seven and eight, or, or three, seven and thirteen, or whatever. Thank you. The other comments, I, I. I think at one time, my concern is the priorities. This isn't going to be anything cheap, and I don't see any kind of a scale here. I would, I wish we would have a scale though, with a minimum fit, Mr. Robertson, the next one, a minimum foot, fourteen foot clearance or whatever our FDOT requires.
Sure.
The width of Dotokines, I think these, and I know these are just artistic drawings. But just take one and just lay it out in Dotokines, the width about where we would put it right before it narrows down, the height. I think this, you're going to find that this thing is huge. And it's not going to be cheap. And, and I'm not sure how far we would get down there before we start perhaps getting sticker shock or maybe taking a second, second thought on it. I know we've got priorities, well, we've got other issues that we need to be working on flooding and that sort of thing. And I know we talked about prioritizing at some point, and I'm not sure where this fits in in the overall priorities. I know we're spending a lot of money on signs, I, I was going to ask how much we were, but if you look at the CRA, you'll see some of the rollover items on that and you'll get an idea. And I, I'm glad that we've got the funds to be doing some of this, but at some point, I think we need to kind of look at it a little more rationally. As far as whether funds at this particular point in time, given everything that we're, else we're doing with the city's entryway, the golf course signs, some of the directional signs, the building signs that we're doing. Whether we really want to spend additional funds on something like this. And I guess we won't know until we get an idea of what those funds are going to be, I mean, what the amount of the cost would be for something like this. But I'm just a little concerned, I don't have a problem moving ahead to get a little, little better idea of what we're talking about in terms of cost. But I'm not willing to spend a whole lot of money on this right now until we get an idea of what our actual priorities are, both at the sponge docks and downtown and other places around Tarpon Springs. So that's all I wanted to say this evening. As far as options, I would go with the, probably the one, which would be a little more comprehensive, the option one, and certainly with public involvement. For everything that they want to look at and put in their ethnic, cultural, historic, those elements, so thank you.
Thank you. I asked the questions on the survey, but I never really expressed my desire or what I think will be good for, what I think about the design. I, I prefer to have rendering number two and number thirteen. And the reason why I like number two is because it has columns and it has the lighthouse on the top of that. And if we put the sponge helmet on one side and the sea seal on the other. And I like the, the tarpon face that is hanging, as long as we have the clearance, you know, for the big trucks going underneath it, I like that. But also like the thirteen because it's more of a traditional type sign. And in regards to the, to the process, I think the option number one is going to be more feasible for everyone. But I, I understand the concern of Commissioner Tequitas, the, how much it's going to cost. You're right, it's not going to be cheap, but at the same time, sponge docks is what Tarpon Springs is known. So whatever we do, we have to do right the first time and make sure it's beautiful, where everybody can come and looks at it, because it's going to be like a photo opportunity for a lot of people. So we've got to make sure whatever we do is, is good. I know we have to be concerned about the finance, but this is something that we're only going to do one time, so let's do it right, in my opinion. I'd like to go to the public com, I'm sure, sure, go ahead.
The, the front, it was Tommy Mahinis's drawing, Tommy Mahinis's drawing of the sponge boat that, that he did. And that was supposed to be.
Was that on a thirteen?
Pardon me, oh, number thirteen, yes, I'm sorry, number twelve and thirteen. And I also wanted to mention in that regard that at some point, maybe if the commission does go in that direction, I'd like for, in addition to the public and elsewhere, maybe at least get some input from the Public Art Committee as well.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Commissioner Terpang.
Thanks. So just after the commission's comment, I do think that there are some elements of thirteen that I think would nice, be incorporated nicely with the option number one. I still like the brick option the best, and I like the gold on gold with the sponger helmet. But I do think that if you took out historic Tarpon Springs and just went with historic sponge docks, I do agree that I think that, you know, we would certainly hope that people at least knew that they were in Tarpon. Whether or not they knew where the sponge docks were is probably a different, different thing. But I think that it, if you took out Tarpon Springs and just had the historic sponge docks with the archway, that that would probably give more opportunity for sponge docks in itself to be a little bit bolder. And then the lighthouse lights on top, I think if you incorporated that from thirteen to number one with the difference in the, the name, I think would look really nice. And then, you know, basically, I would just ask, where does, where does that leave us tonight as a deciding, you know, commission on this issue? I mean, what, what direction are we giving?
Well, I believe we should, you know, kind of stick to the option number one and design better, then it will come back to us again, and, and then to get the people's opinion as well.
So have we not got the people's opinion?
Well, the, the way it was explained to us, the survey, actually, they didn't see the pictures that we're looking at. It was just different, they were just presenting ideas.
If I may, could we get at least, whatever we do as a next step, and I would think it would be move, city manager Lacorice, correct me if I'm wrong, the idea is to start the process, one of the three, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so perhaps early on, in the beginning, when they start looking at that, whatever firm is going to have enough experience to at least be able to cost this out, give us some kind of a drawing, and maybe even the staff could do that. To scale, to see what we're looking at for the, for the sponge docks. Let me just say something. Look at thirteen for a second, I'll give you an idea. If, if, if this area down there in between, if Dotokines, let's say, is twenty-four, thirty feet wide. And so in between these two hedges, it's going to be thirty feet, you could be looking proportionately at these columns of being eight to ten feet wide each, which isn't going to fit down there. So, and if you go through some of these others from a perspective as well, it's going to be the same sort of thing. So what you eventually, you can pick out one of these designs, and then when you do it to scale, that's something that will actually fit in on that sidewalk in the right of way, it's going to be looking completely different than what you were shown this evening. So that's why I think it's important to get a design professional involved in this, to look at things at scale and then come back with some kind of rough cost estimates of what we're looking at for these. That would be kind of an initial step to one, two or three, I would think.
Yes, and when they come back with that drawing, or, you know, to share that with the people, make sure everybody will like that as well.
Right.
And if we have sent that out to many people, you know, to everybody, or have a town hall meeting or something, where everybody will get that information to make sure that the public is, you know, in favor of doing it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to point out a couple of things, so this was funded in the fiscal year 2020, and I believe this is going to be rolling over into our current fiscal year, isn't that right, city manager? So there's funds set aside for this specific project. Secondly, we're in a public setting, we're in a public meeting today, we've reached out for public comment, I think it'd be good to have it as a commission meeting, but not necessarily another reach out, because what we're going to do is we're going to keep reaching out and it's going to, we'll never end up starting the project. So I think it's best to go the route of it comes back to the city commission, we have a commission meeting, we have, just like we have public here available tonight and public on the Zoom meeting, where they could come and give us their comments, where we could hear it one on one, or, I'm sorry, as a board, and not just through a meeting where maybe one of us could only attend. I think that would be best to advertise a meeting like we do with all of our other items and build on on a regular basis. But from a design build, bid build, there could be some concerns, like I've talked to some builders, from, actually multiple builders for signs. And they say that what they run into is, when you have someone that's just from a design perspective, they're going to design a sign that is very difficult to build, that won't withstand maybe a hurricane-proof winds and some other aspects. And like I said, this has been from multiple companies I've talked to. So having the design build under the same umbrella, option number two, would actually beneficial because you're looking at a company that would do the design and the build, so they're going to know what stands and how to build it. So if you're just looking at from a design perspective, it looks really pretty, but it's almost impossible to build, that's a concern I have with option number one. And that's just, it's not me speaking, it's from other professionals in the marketplace that have told that to me. So I just have concerns with option number one. So I think it's a better idea to go with the same company that would design it and build it, knowing that the design functionality would work when they go to construct it. So, thank you.
Mayor, I don't believe I agree with that, because the designer is going to design, if it's a design build, the designer is going to design it the way the person that he's working with is going to build it, rather than being completely independent of the process. So I, I would think that there would have to be a little more creative latitude. And if there's some issues, then there, there could be some kind of a negotiation between the two to work those out and come back to the commission for approval of any changes. I just, I just think that the designer and the builder gets a little too close to things with each other when that happens.
Okay, I'd like to go to public comments on this item. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Tina Bukavales, 115 Athens Street. And thank goodness we're addressing this, because I've been waiting since November to talk about it. In regard to the proposed gateway signage, I would like.
Excuse me, Ms. Bukavales, can you get, thank you.
Closer?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. In regard to the proposed signage, I would like to remind the Board of Commissioners that the sponge docks is part of the Greek Town Historic District listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Since it is a nationally recognized historic district, I would strongly recommend that the proposed signage reflect the district's prevailing vernacular Florida architecture of the twenty, of the early twentieth century. In those terms, what is most appropriate for the gateway would be what was typical at the time, which would be the brick and the wrought iron, or something that looks like wrought iron, powdered metal or whatever. Or even the wood pilings design would at least be typical of a docks area. Some of the other examples of gateway signage that I've seen seem to me frankly, almost kitsch, relying on cultural stereotypes about Greek culture, such as the flags and the key designs and things like that. And I don't think it's appropriate for the area architecturally anyway. And it would be a shame to, to go for kitsch, I think, in a district that has such an important historic place. And why the recurring images of tarpon, I don't get that. From its inception, the sponge docks primarily served the sponge industry. And it, and isn't that what you are advertising to people? There are now some boats doing commercial fishing on the river, but it's not tarpon, which is mostly recreational. So I don't see why the tarpon. And also, one thing I would like to ask about or to have you consider is where is the funding coming from exactly for the gateway? Are there any federal funds involved? If so, while the Greek Town District is not subject generally to municipal historic preservation building codes, due to its designation as a traditional cultural property. A section 106 review of things that are going to be built or changed there is necessary if there is any federal money involved. So that should be considered. And now personally, and this is if you do the gateway, I'm not sure that this money that you have set aside couldn't be put to better use to enhance the district. The sponge docks has been a tourist area for a hundred years. Not having a gateway sign has not influenced people from not coming to the docks, they've always come there. So this is not really necessary. But something that could enhance the whole area is to hire a preservation architect to help take the buildings back to, and most of them are original brick buildings, to what they were, to make the whole district look a little better, kind of like what's been done on Hibiscus Street. I'm surprised that the commission hasn't in fact brought a preservation architect to bear on some of this, who could also maybe help you design the gateway sign. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here now, Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have any online wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have raised hands, so I'll allow the first one in. We have a phone caller, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Nicholas Tabus, 1427 Mears Boulevard, calling about the sign. I think personally, I have to disagree with Ms. Bukavales, I do think that having a gateway sign is very important. Of course, the sponge docks has been a tourist destination for the last hundred years, but it may not be a known entity to, you know, new tourists that arrive into the city. And I think that there sometimes is a little bit confusion, you know, especially being a resident here, you hear from tourists all the time, hey, can you point us in the direction of the docks? Or even when they're close over there, they're, they're not even really exactly sure of where it's at. So I think a gateway sign, I don't think that it inhibits too much on the historic nature of the sponge docks. And I think that the, the number thirteen design that I'm looking at here in the backup, I think that's really nice. I like the coloring of that. Now, whether or not that ends up being brick or mosaic or whatever we discussed, I think that that is a nice design. I like how the sponge docks is big, and I do think that this is something that you guys should definitely be going forward with and, and quite soon. But overall, I support the idea of having the signage, and I think that it's important to have an entryway and a gateway for people to recognize the entrance to the sponge docks. And yeah, so thanks, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do you have anybody, do we have anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, sir, we do, I'll allow the next person in. Thank you.
Boni Yotti School Yes, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I just want to say, stop rushing this project, I mean, it looks like a Disney attraction, they all look cheap and tacky. Commissioners, did you not listen, there's eighteen completed, eighteen people who completed the questionnaire. You know, I want this discussion to be paused because you haven't received. because you haven't received enough input and the city doesn't try hard enough to ask the citizens. I mean, you guys have an archaic way of citizen engagement and public notices. Have I not been telling you guys to spend more money to advertise to the people what's going on? They all look like a glorified interstate highway exit sign, you know? And it's not the Public Arts Committee's fault too. They're trying their best, but I don't think they're given enough funding or enough leeway to be able to reach out to people. You know, and this, whatever this sign's going to be, it's going to be there for the next hundred years. So take your time as we push this through. You know, use social media. Come up to an idea where you come to three or four designs and let the people decide. It's going to help you guys got with a bigger input. The more you guys stop letting people involve, the more it becomes your personal preference and that's not what we need. So, and like I said, there's only 130 emails. That's not enough for a city of 20,000. So I don't know what's going on. At some point, we're going to have to spend more money and, uh, tell you the truth, Ms. Tina sounds like she knows what she's talking about. So take our time with getting this pushed. And don't make any decision today, uh, about picking one or the other. I would go back and get more citizen engagement and see what the people want to say. And number one, I mean, that maroon brick, it looks like a high school entrance. It, it looks like we live in Dunedin, so, you know, like that belongs in downtown or some other area. It, it's nice, but those two big fish, those two big tarpon, it's not the Sponge Docks. It never is. Number 13 doesn't look too bad. It's got, you know, this Greek color, it's got this stucco look. It looks like, sort of looks like you're walking through the sponge exchange and you're walking down Mykonos as well as by Dimitri's on the water, looking, overlooking the water. So guys, just take your time. Don't, you know, if you guys actually reach out to the people, you'll get more of an input and a direction and feel comfortable you're getting it done right. So, thank you.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Licorice, do you have, uh, direction of what, direction you're looking for?
No. So let me, let me summarize some of the things on here. Obviously, and we'll get the, you know, the design, what, you know, what we're going to do. There is a concern of cost because I'm going to tell you from other things we've seen, when we have somebody go out and design this thing and engineer it, um, I don't want to see how much of the money we got put aside is going to be taken into it. It's going to be necessary, but there'll be some money concerns that we'll have to do. But again, to move this along, I hear a lot of, as far as consensus wise, and you can, you know, debate the different things. Um, I hear the arch on 13. I hear the, the lighthouse lights. Um, everybody's seen the sponge diver helmet, whichever way you do it, whether it's the background. I think the only thing that there's some differences on is the column. Obviously, the collar and brick or, or the, uh, what's in 13, maybe what's on it, whether it's the tarpon, whether it's a mosaic of the sponge boat or some other thing, that's very minor. We can decide that along the way. And then the only other thing we've heard from everybody, um, is when, is when Vice Mayor Carr talks about some aspects of seven and eight. I think we're close to something that to go out and really find out, um, the design, the size, the cost. Um, and then again, when it comes back, we can tweak the look. But so far, we've got a lot of consistencies, unless I'm wrong, of that look we're looking at. Um, again, does it look the brick of one? Does it look the materials of 13? Um, but obviously, we need to find out the engineering, the cost and all of that stuff. So, um, I'd just like to hear a little more of any things we're in agreement or not in agreement of, of what I just said. And then the method of, of, you know, to direct Bob to, to hopefully go out and do something to bring back and whatever we do with it when we bring back more public influence on. But we need something, especially what I want to see is the cost. Um, that's my big element to see. Unless we have this thing designed and engineered, um, we're not going to know oh, what's left to do to do the cost of this.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I, um, on that process, the process I'm talking about now, I, in addition to what the city manager described, I think that what would be important would be a drawing to scale of, let's say, one and 13 is an example, just to get an idea of what they're going to look like. But, and, and maybe that could be worked on in some later meeting, but, uh, maybe after we select the designer, if we want to go that route. But I think the process is going to be important either one or, I, I didn't hear anybody really weigh in on number three being good. So either one or two, either design, bid and construct or design, build, would be the two options. I, I, was that the kind of direction that you need, city manager?
Yes, with one or two, yes.
Yeah, uh, it, it, if I'm correct me if I wrong, I believe the number one, it was the most popular, uh, uh, way to go, wasn't it?
That's the way I would prefer.
That's the way I understood it.
Want to hear from everybody else.
Uh, I start from there. Commissioner Donovan, which one do you prefer?
Yeah, when you, when you say option one, are you referring to the sign design? Are you, are you referring to the option one, two, three on our backup for the design?
Yeah, one, two, three.
You're referring through the one, one through three?
Yeah, the design, bid to build or design and build.
I like option two, the design build. Again, I, I don't, I don't think it's, you know, it should be too stressful. I'm, I'm good with option one or two, but I'd lean more towards option two, the design build. And then as far as the sign goes, again, just to simplify it, um, and confirm what our city manager just said, I like the brick and template of option one and I like the arch and lights of number 13. And that's for the actual design.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um, I would lean to design, build, option number two. Um, I do think option one, number one is going to increase cost, um, more than option number two myself. Uh, from a consensus standpoint, the brick is, I think, a must for this. And then historic Sponge Docks, I think is a great option, uh, for the lettering. But I do think there's some additional avenues, like when it goes to a designer, um, because my understanding that these are, these are not professionally designed, uh, that we're looking at, that we want to give the designer the opportunity to do some more characteristics that could pull in additional metal if it needs to. So if the top portion of the, the brick where it's at now, that can be metal as well. So, um, I, I don't want to limit the designer, whoever is going to be the design build from their design creativity, right? Um, so I would at least give the direction with the brick and then have the wrought iron, uh, or powder coated metal, um, in there for some other characteristics that could be improved.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
What, what did you say about the lettering, historic Sponge Docks? Or you still want to keep tarpon springs?
No, I don't want tarpon springs on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So essentially, we're thinking like 13, but with the bricks.
Yeah, and I mean, leaving it up to the designer to if they want it, if like that's the top half where the lighthouse, in between the lighthouse and the second blue line is, um, I mean, they could get creative and actually make the lighthouse out of metal there if they wanted to. Um, or they could do something a little more creative. I don't know what that would look like. It's just, I don't want to limit a designer. Um, there's not really need to go to designer if we have the, the template here, right?
Right. Okay. In regards to the process, uh, I prefer the, uh, option number one, which is the architect design bid build. And, uh, rendering number 13 is what I, I think is going to be, the better one for the, for the area. And replace the other lights on the top to look like more of a, no, no, this is good. The lights are good. Lights are good.
Sure. So in terms of the design, build, I'll go with the option two, design, build. And then from a, uh, design perspective on what it looks like, um, I think it's easier at this point to say that I like option 13, but with the columns being brick. And then I still like, given that the columns in theory would be brick, because it seems like there's at least three, uh, from a consensus standpoint, I think the gold on gold with the sponger helmet in the column looks better. So 13 with the brick and, uh, the sponger helmet being gold on gold.
Okay. Commissioner Licorice, what is your, uh, take on that?
I, I, well, I, I think the design, um, bid and construct, which is the exact same process that we're using for the, uh, City Clerk's Building. And it's not any, that's-
That number two and number one?
Number one.
Number one, that's what I thought.
And that's the, the traditional way. Um, I think given the, uh, closeness of what we're talking about, I would like to see the renderings of both number one and number two with the changes in number one that the commissioners had pointed out, just to see the difference in the, uh, the color and, um, uh, and, and that sort of thing. I don't think there is any reason why we couldn't do that. And then also, um, I would like to see the, uh, right up front, the scale of both those comment, uh, concepts, because I think people are going to get a different idea, um, with what they're looking at right now. This would be good, but I think this would be something like a, a, a pretty wide walkway, maybe 20, 20 feet or so or less, uh, with no height restriction. But I think the other issue is going to, uh, what our requirements are going to be from FDOT, which is the standard that's used for these arches, uh, they'll put a different complexion on it. And then, um, lastly is the cost, I think, is going to be the most important thing out of all of this. So, um, except for one other minor detail, which is the right of way. As far as having to take, uh, or get an easement of something, uh, to decide how that's going to lay out, that's all part of this as well. Um, and so there's going to have to probably be some survey work and things along that nature to determine how that's going to fit. So, um, for example, if, it might be easier if you did number one or 13, it'd be so wide that you would have a walk through underneath, um, rather than something solid like that, because it would block everything. Something like a five-foot passageway through the middle of it underneath, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about. So, um, it's not going to be just a simple thing of what you're looking at here. But I, I know I've thrown a lot out there to you just now, but, um, I know you've got this recorded and everything, you can listen back to it. So, thank you.
Uh, the consensus that we got is that we got three votes for, uh, the process to use option number two. Three versus two. And the rendering number 13 with, uh, red brick.
Can we look at with white as well?
Huh?
Can we look at it with white as well? Or can we see it with a stucco as well, just to see that what the difference would be?
I mean, we could, we could. It's just, you know, the consensus right now is to have, uh, red brick. But it doesn't hurt if they can, uh, come up with another drawing.
I just would like it, I mean, I don't understand what the big deal would be.
No.
I don't think there'd be any problem with those two.
There'd be a problem doing that.
Utilizing those two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question real quick?
And, and also, and like Commissioner, uh, Licorice has mentioned, it's very, very important to see if the, uh, property is available to place these, uh, sign, because that's going to be a pretty big sign.
Have we not identified that we're going to not put it on the corner and hold it closer to the city marine?
We identified to put a little further down towards the marina.
Right, from a right of way perspective, right?
Yeah, yeah. Was somebody said they wanted?
Yeah, I, I just wanted the clarification, um, like for instance, number 13, it, it has like a mosaic of some sort. Um, was that a consensus from the board? Because I think there's some other alternatives that we could look at as well, um, for what would go on there other than a mosaic. Um, and the, the standpoint of if we're looking from a, so you're shaking your head, but, um, the consensus was on the board that it was brick. And if we're looking at doing a whitewash example too, we might as well do some more examples with some additional pieces, uh, on there as well, since it's not very difficult, um, to do, um, based on the city manager.
I don't see a problem, yeah.
I think it's a good idea to go ahead and take some of the elements that were on the survey, and look how to incorporate in that as well, so.
And you also said some creative things, for instance, like the metalwork underneath the light or something like that. Um, you know, again, some creative options, again, the options. And in the end, you can decide which options you put on. There'd be no harm in having those options and everything that we've talked about today.
I have a question of, uh, Mr. Robertson, if I may ask him.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Robertson, have we done anything design, build lately? Is there an example of anything that we've done, design, build?
Well, the most recent would be the RO plant.
The what?
The reverse osmosis water plant. That's one we did as a design build. Most typically, as you said-
Reverse osmosis.
The reverse osmosis water treatment plant, yes, sir.
All right. That's it, thank you.
Good. Mr. Licorice, I think you got direction there, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thanks. Okay, move on to the next one. Which is item number nine, the award RFP number 210035 PAM, July 4th fireworks display. Staff reporter, Mr. Licorice.
Again, we're early on the bid. Hopefully, we can have a Fourth of July this year. Um, we're hoping for it. Um, also, we have two options on there. I, I think we've budgeted for the first option 25, but I like consideration to, to approve it with option two. Um, and me finding additional $10,000 because if we're, if we're by the grace of God, lucky enough to have Fourth of July this year, we need to make up a little bit for not having it last year. So I'd like to do a, or have the option to do a bigger display.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice. Well, uh, 2020 was a very difficult year due to the coronavirus. We canceled just about every major event that we had, including the, uh, Fourth of July. I'm hoping the, uh, 2021, God's will, the COVID-19 will go away. And, uh, so we can have a big celebration. Uh, I prefer that we do, uh, the optional, uh, the option B. I think our residents need to have a very good celebration for, uh, Fourth of July. So I prefer option number, um, option B. Vice Mayor?
I support option B as well. I have a question for Mark. Um, what happens if, is there an out clause for the city?
When we do the contract after your approval tonight, we'll, we'll, we'll put something like that into the contract.
Okay. And just for clarification, this would, we're looking at Sunset Beach. For the record, okay.
Same thing, yeah. Commissioner Tarpe?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I'm good with option B, but Mark, can you tell me what happened to the funds last year? Did we get those? We didn't, we didn't lose our money last year for fireworks?
No, no.
All right, great. I'm good with the-
Commissioner Donovan?
I support B as well. I think it's a reasonable price increase for a much bigger event.
Commissioner Licorice?
The option B would be the, is that's what you're asking me? Yeah, the, the higher, uh, 30-minute display.
Yeah, so. Okay. Uh, we go into the public comments. Uh, do we have any public comments on this item? Here none. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails? No. Mr. Jump, do we have anyone online wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time.
Boni Yautis Kuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Uh, I am an individual Orthodox Christian. I am speaking only for myself, but many Christians who feel just like me. Uh, I want, I want to say this is a good opportunity for, uh, as Orthodox Christians to be able to present in the future, uh, a permit to have a legal fireworks display for Orthodox Easter. Now, it will be a given pool on what the city will allow for us to do, but I just want to let you know, we're well ahead that in the next couple of months, we will be trying to put in a permit. And, uh, I will ask that maybe we have it from Spring Bayou, Craig Park, just like you used to have other firework displays in the past for Fourth of July. Um, it can go off at midnight, maybe five, 10 minutes worth of a display. That would be awesome. If not, worst comes to worst and we get pushed back in every bit of it. We would like to have a Sunday evening fireworks display, just like you would have at Sunset Beach, where maybe after we would get done with all of our lambs and, uh, roasting and have a good time with families, our families would head down to Fred Howard and we can watch the Orthodox Easter celebration for, uh, from, from Howard and watch it from Sunset Beach. And the whole community can be involved. It doesn't- It doesn't, it doesn't have to be just Orthodox Christians, but a day to be able to celebrate. And I know as COVID's coming along, everything's gonna get better. Let's be responsible. Howard Park is more than big enough for everybody to be able to socially distance who wants to come watch the Fourth of July fireworks display. It's something that's been going on since the, the very inception of our, the very first anniversary of United States of America, and we have to continue to do it. And, um, just want to let you guys know what's gonna be coming on in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Job, do you have anybody else wishing to speak?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Thank you. The chair will continue motion.
Mission approved. Uh, option B, second. I've got a comment to.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarapany?
Yes.
Brings me a car?
Yes.
Now, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number ten, the award file number twenty-one zero zero fifty-one. C A M, purchase of vehicles utilizing source well contract number twenty-two-one dash twelve zero seven sixteen. N A F vehicles, cars, vans, SUVs and light trucks with related equipment, accessories and services. Staff report.
Again, this is coming on board because of the cost. Um, we've got the department heads. The main ones are police, fire. And I think Paul Smith, we've, we've got a group of vehicles. We've also got, um, sustainable fleet vehicles. Um, so we have the people available for any questions. These are all budgeted vehicles from your budget. Um, it's that time where we purchase them. So if there's any questions about any of the vehicles, I think most of the department heads are here now to discuss those with you.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? So, Commissioner Tarapany?
Thank you. Um, so regarding two things, one is the funding out of, uh, there's a little bit of funding out of the penny fund. And then also I have some questions as it relates to the yard waste department and the twenty-five hundred, uh, Dodge Ram pickup that they're asking for with the, uh, with the hundred gallon diesel fuel transfer. Um, it's described in the backup that this is to cover sixty-two acre parcel. Um, I've spent some time at the existing yard waste facility, and it doesn't appear that we're using the sixty-two acre site. It just appears that we're using maybe an acre. So I'm curious as to why we need a twenty-five hundred pickup truck with a hundred gallons of diesel fuel, when we would be maybe better served just to have a hundred gallon diesel fuel tank at the scale and the vehicle or in the machinery could just drive to the, to the scale house. What's the purpose?
Tom, are you on the Zoom?
Yes, sir, I am. Uh, Tom Punch, Public Works Director. Uh, yeah, uh, uh, the reason why the scale house is being moved from its existing, uh, position, uh, place on Levis over to the, uh, yard waste facility on the property itself, uh, what encompassed down to is also the maintenance of that right of way, uh, along, uh, Miras Boulevard. So there'll be additional maintenance, uh, required, cutting the grasses and, and, and maintaining those, uh, stitches, which equipment's gonna be needed. Uh, that way I don't put the extra strain on, on our parks department if I can help it. Uh, we actually do cut the, the entire sixty-two, uh, acres of property there. Uh, we do have a, a tractor that we purchased a number of years ago. Uh, we also have a couple of heavy pieces of equipment out there. Uh, we do have, so we're gonna have to move equipment in and out on occasions, back and forth to the, uh, to the yard for any type of maintenance. Uh, we also use quite a bit of fuel out there with the other piece of equipment. Uh, so we won't be chasing around not only picking up diesel fuel, we're also gonna need some gasoline fuel for those other pieces of equipment. Uh, that's why the hundred gallon tank, uh, on top of the, uh, the pickup truck. Uh, we do have a tank out there now for the diesel fuel.
So, why do we need the fuel to be mobile?
Uh, because you have two different types of, uh, fuel out there. Gasoline's a little more, uh, complicated on storing on site, uh, uh, a little more expensive. It's much more, uh, uh, it's safer. It's less than a hundred gallons over here. So the, so the requirements of carrying gasoline compared into a small tank compared to a larger tank is, is much different.
Size of the Dodge Ram pickup truck is twenty-five hundred, so it can haul a loader from one yard to the other?
Well, no, the, the, it's actually gonna be able to put a trailer onto it. So when you have to move equipment, sometimes we have to take these, these mowers and bring them back to the yard for repair. Uh, we don't have a vehicle out there now. The guys do run them, uh, use their own vehicle sometimes, run them back for it to the, uh, the banks. So it'll be a multi, uh, multi-use vehicle. It just won't be just for, uh, carrying a fuel tank.
And then funding, do we have any other funding source, uh, besides sixty thousand dollars out of the penny fund? That question.
It could be, it probably could be, uh, I'll talk to Ron Harry, but maybe possibly a sanitation or the yard waste facility itself.
So for me, I would generally, as y'all know, I try not to allocate penny funds when there's other funds that we would be able to utilize the funds from, um, this being one of them. And, I mean, I always like us to have adequate equipment and things of that nature, because I believe in it. But not necessarily sold on the Dodge Ram twenty-five hundred pickup truck for the yard waste facility.
On the other case too, Commissioner, we'd actually also use a free emergency, uh, Jordan Hurricanes too, for, with a four-wheel drive. So it would be another backup in that case.
Ron Harry, are you on Zoom to talk about the funding?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, I think the, um, Commissioner was mentioning that maybe the yard waste vehicle is coming out of the penny fund. It's not coming out of the penny fund. It's coming out of the sanitation fund, but that's one of the questions.
Uh, no, it wasn't in relate, I mean, there was kind of two separate questions. One is the sixty thousand dollars of the total funding. I believe, I'm looking for it now. Now I can't find that in the, oh, here it is. Uh, local option sales tax, sixty thousand dollars. So that's, that's one question as it relates to total funding. And if we can find the sixty thousand dollars elsewhere in a, in a more appropriate fund, in my opinion. And then also, the, uh, use of the, this is the second question, was the use of the, uh, twenty-five hundred Ram pickup at the yard waste department. That, the, uh, the need for that. So it's two questions. One is can we find sixty thousand dollars in funding from a different fund versus the local option sales tax? And then two, do we really need a twenty-five hundred, uh, Dodge Ram at the yard waste facility, given what the description's been in the backup?
The vehicle, just to clarify, the vehicles coming out of the penny fund are the, uh, seven police vehicles and the two fire vehicles. And one of the fire vehicles is totally funded by the EMS county funding. And then part to about ten percent of the other fire vehicle is also gonna be county funded. Um, I'm not sure if that helps answer some of your questions there.
So is there, is there another fund that we can find sixty thousand dollars for this, or do we just eliminate the Dodge Ram?
Well, just to clarify, the Dodge Ram is coming out of, that's a yard waste fund, isn't it? That's for the yard waste. It doesn't help your penny to go away with that one.
I've got a, a question for Commissioner Mayor if I can. Um, so in the backup, it talks about, um, the fire departments, uh, replacing a Tahoe with another Tahoe. Uh, I don't know what the, the lifespan of the Tahoe from the fire department that they would be getting rid of. But maybe that could be an alternative to push that over to the yard waste facility. So they have something to pull, uh, if they need to, and if they need the additional, um, I guess, a, a gas, uh, container, they could, we could acquire a trailer for probably less than two thousand dollars. So now we're getting a longer useful life out of Tahoe that's moving from, uh, a fire department, which they need that vehicle at all times, be able to respond to a fire at all times. So that's why they need newer vehicles. This vehicle in the yard waste doesn't necessarily need to respond to an emergency across their sixty-two acre, field that they're mowing. So maybe that could be the alternative, that we look at a trailer and a Tahoe to use as the brand new, um, Dodge pickup. I'm, I'm open to, uh, Commissioner or Vice Mayor.
Okay, um, first, for again, confused there. Okay. So this is nothing to do with the six, this is nothing to do with the penny for panelists, mate, this is.
It's still sixty thousand dollars there.
Maybe you can, the Tahoe, you're, you're exchanging, uh, and the condition of it to drive to do a, a work truck that's coming from a fund that is meant to be, I mean, it's coming from the yard waste fund. So, I don't know what you're trying to get by moving a fire, a fire truck to there. So what, what is the vehicle you're replacing and condition and?
Can I, can I just, uh, stop you for one second? It's actually forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars for that truck with the, uh, for the yard waste. And so it's not, it's not sixty-four thousand. What we see here is the funding, the budget will be four oh one, four one oh nine, five, three, four, sixty-four, which is actually the budget, uh, the budget number for that fund and that's the yard waste.
And again, this was improved in the budget. Um, what is the, what is the car that you're, the Tahoe you're getting rid of?
Scott Young Fire Chief, it's gonna be replaced as a two thousand ten. Uh, it's about eleven years old now. I don't have a mileage right off hand. Uh, it is workable condition, uh, which just met its life expectancy for us. So I don't know what its tow capacity is or anything like that. That would be more of a, uh, fleet directors.
That, that tone will be like the symbol to a, like an F, uh, fifteen hundred pickup truck, a standard sized four-wheel drive pickup truck.
You have any questions to the chief?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions for the chief. I don't have any issue with the vehicle replacements. And, you know, other than the, uh, the Dodge Ram, and then just trying to see if we cannot spend sixty thousand worth of penny money, one way or the other. That, that, those were my only two points. Is one is I think, I don't think we necessarily need the, the yard waste vehicle. Um, but maybe. And then as a principle, I try not to spend the penny money when there's other sources of funding, that's all.
If I'm not mistaken, that, uh, that figure comes for a, uh, fire department vehicle that's gonna be reimbursed from, uh, the county. That was my mistake.
Uh, Mr. Jacobs?
The sixty thousand, one sixty-one should be for a, uh, fire department vehicle. It's gonna be reimbursed from the county. That was my mistake on the, uh, the funding issue.
So then the sixty thousand from penny will be reimbursed, so that's a wash.
Correct.
Okay, well, I'm good with that.
Okay.
You, you don't have any more concerns? Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor, do you have any, any other questions?
I mean, I just want a quick comment. I, I think any way we could utilize or reuse vehicles within the city is gonna be a good thing to do. Um, instead of sending them to auction, so if we could get more useful life out of these vehicles, uh, from the, the police or fire department, I think we should go ahead and figure out ways to do that. And then if we need to move equipment, I know the water department's got a significant amount of, uh, of a fleet that can carry a large, large equipment, um, over three-quarter ton, the one ton or two ton vehicles. So, um, there can be some options there too. So, um, either way. And then also from a sustainability standpoint, I know there's some, uh, discussions about that in the backup as well too. So looking forward to, uh, seeing how that's gonna be used in the future.
Commissioner Donovan, you had a comment, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, one thing, just to clarify, because I know we just got a little bit confused with different funding stuff. That yard waste truck, that's the forty-two thousand coming from the actual yard waste fund. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, actually. Um, under my memo, it shows you that, yes. Yes, that's a, yes.
Okay. Um, I actually had some questions for Mr. Smith, if he's on.
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Mr. Smith, thank you, um, thank you for talking some of this through with me in advance. Um, I just kind of a quick rundown for some of those admin vehicles. Um, when it comes to any vehicles for police and fire use, I understand that it can be a matter of life and death. I'm fine to give them whatever they need. But when it comes to the admin vehicles, um, I just wanted you to go into a little bit more of what that daily usage consists of. Um, some kind of justification of why the vehicles are always gonna tend to be newer. Um, and kind of how those sustainable vehicles may be able to pay for themselves over time.
Sure. So I have two vehicles, uh, in this request. One is for the cemetery, and this was a repeat request from the previous year. The board gave us direction to defer that, because it's heavily motivated by the expansion, which is in its final phases of completion. But that vehicle, the RAV four hybrid, will be used primarily to transport customers from our office to the new site. That's really the only safe way to bring people over to the site to view the options, that sort of thing. Can you still hear me there?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that'll be used daily also by staff to make the daily runs to the Corks office and City Hall for the paperwork transfer back and forth. Um, the hybrid was a good selection for that because of its excellent gas mileage. It gets about forty miles per gallon, and that does very well in stop and go type situations. Like it'll be used. Um, the other vehicle is similarly a RAV four for the wastewater treatment plant and the admin staff in general. It'll be a pool vehicle, so it won't be assigned to one particular person, which will enhance the amount of use that it gets. But it'll be used for a variety of things, um, daily transportation around to the different city plants, City Hall, but also for those trips to Tampa regulatory meetings. Um, also occasionally running samples over to a lab when we have to do things on an urgent basis. So it'll get used regularly. And again, the gas mileage will actually prove to be a cost saver over time with the reduced maintenance costs.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are the only questions, um, I have for you. I do have one question for Ron, if he's still on. Um, just how much it, how much it costs to do a vehicle wrap for one of our admin vehicles?
From what I hear, I think it's a, depends on the wrap. I think a right around twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars when I talk to the fleet manager.
Okay. Again, I know we're starting to talk about, you know, some, some change here relatively. Um, but that's just something for maybe the commission to consider is that I, I would be okay with for some of the admin vehicles, obviously not police and fire related. Uh, but for some of the admin vehicles, maybe to just get like a magnet that says the city of Tarpon Springs. They have that city of Tarpon Springs identifier, but they also don't need to spend the, you know, a few thousand dollars to actually get a fancy vehicle wrap. So I'd, I'd be fine to just smack a magnet on there that says the city of Tarpon Springs and save a few thousand dollars. And I'd be fine with even those, those few thousand dollars just going right back into those funds or letting the employees use them. I just think that might be something that, even though it's relatively small, it might be a little bit wasteful.
That's it. Commissioner Chicas?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm not sure who can answer this, but how many vehicles do we have in pool status now?
How many vehicles in what?
Pool status.
In a pool status. I know some of these are gonna be evaluated, moved to pool status. Uh, I, I just don't know how many pool, how many vehicles, how many cars and trucks do we have in a pool status right now? But in other words, let me just use the arborist as an example. If, uh, the arborist needed to go somewhere, they would go to the pool, get a vehicle and go. Is that correct?
Yes, Tom, how? Tom? Yeah, we, right now, we have a couple of LTDs that are trying to get on the last legs. I'm sure you're familiar with those, Mark. And we have the pickups, I think it's a total of four right now in, in, in the pool.
Four trucks and cars or four trucks?
Uh, two, two cars, two trucks.
Two cars, two trucks. And then we've got, um, we've got three Dodge Chargers that will be moving into pool status from the police department.
Those will remain in our pool, sir. They'll be marked police vehicles, uh, readily available if the, uh.
That, that would be, um, they'd still be used for the police.
Correct. They'll be marked vehicles. So if one of our other vehicles goes down for maintenance or preventive maintenance, oil change and such, the officer will be able to take that pool car and still be able to perform the functions on patrol.
Do, do you have any now?
Oh, yes.
How many?
Uh, I don't have the exact number right now. I'd get that with Sergeant Miller.
I, I guess what I'm getting at, just to be fair to everybody, is a recurring cost. That's ultimately what hurts and from my perspective and my experience. And, um, we're, we've got some vehicles that we use that we've justified because of the positions. Um, and I don't have an issue with the police or the fire purchases here. Um, they're, they're budgeted. Um, it's just, uh, being careful not to create too much of a burden on the budget for recurring costs that we actually have to maintain those cars as well to be in a drivable, uh, condition. Uh, so that's gonna, they're, they're gonna have to be maintained as well. The, the ones that I do have a question on is the ones that have not been budgeted. Uh, for example, the, um, the water supply division, and this has got to do with the sustainability, uh, purchase. The, this, the water supply division, another. division, another one is the, um, I think there's two or three on here. I guess I have a hard problem after the budget was just adopted three months ago, if I'm not mistaken, maybe four. Um, and here we are purchasing things that have not been budgeted. I, I would have, regardless of where the money's coming from, I would just would, I'm not sure i- is, if there was a need for them, I think they would have been budgeted, I guess is what I'm getting at. And I'm not sure why some of these can't be deferred unless the need has popped up since the budget was adopted, a, a real need. Uh, why it can't be, uh, deferred until this next bus, uh, fiscal year budget, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two?
Paul Smith, I didn't think you were going to address that.
Yes. So the, uh, one vehicle for the wastewater treatment plant, the utilities vehicle Commissioner Vaticiottis mentioned, um, what happened there and certainly on my department is we put the request into fleet back in a timely manner, but for whatever reason, we did not, we did not get it into the actual budget. So that's why it wasn't there. It was always a priority for us, but that was full disclosure, disclosure that it wasn't in the budget. Um, it is a needed replacement. The vehicle it's replacing is a two thousand and eight Ford.
What about the water supply division?
Uh, those, there's two EVs that we originally had in the first draft. There's, uh, as far as I know, there's no water supply division in this current memo. That'll be coming back to the board, uh, for a request. We're researching some possible lower cost ways to recommend the purchase through a lease for the EV vehicles. So I think that's the one you might be referring to.
Now you have one here, the water supply will be purchasing one lease on leave as part of the sustainable fleet. You're not purchasing it as part of this purchase?
Correct. That is a previous version of the backup, I believe. Uh, we actually pulled the two leaves out of the request because we, uh, got information that we might be able to.
No, no, you're right. I pulled this off last week, this, this memorandum last week. So there's an updated one. Okay. Well, I've had my two comments. The, um, um, I, I just want to be careful on the recurring cost and, and I, I would like some kind of a, a rundown on how many vehicles we actually have. The other thing I have a problem with is these, um, fifty thousand dollar Kubotas that we keep buying. I'm not sure why we need them because I, I see them driving down Cedar Street all the time, just like they're a regular vehicle, but they're fifty thousand dollar Kubotas. Uh, maybe we could do something with less than that. I, I don't know what their use is, but at some point, um, given that we're trying to catch up on a lot of things right now, I would like to get a briefing, a public briefing on the number of vehicles we have and, and some other things with regard to the, um, uh, the number in the pool and, and how the police department works. I don't have any issue. I understand the seven cars a year because of replacement. I don't have any issue with that. I just don't have a handle on how many cars we have. I, it's got to be two or three hundred, I would suspect. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
We can get that for you. Yes.
Okay.
Right back to the future.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Major Young?
Yes, sir.
You are, uh, proposing to, uh, to get seven cars or seven vehicles for the police department?
Correct.
Are those vehicles are going to be fully equipped or just stripped?
No, sir. They'll be fully equipped. Uh, they'll be patrol units, uh, assigned to patrol.
Okay. Is there any other funding available for, uh, the equipment that goes into the car?
I would have.
The general fund?
I would have to defer to Ron Herring for that question.
Mr. Herring?
Yeah, the funding is all included in the item on the agenda and it's all being charged to the penny fund as part of the vehicle.
Any other funds available, they can subsidize that?
Well, if there's any additional cost, if you, you know, if you can either put it out of the penny fund or other than that, you probably have to do the general fund.
No, there's not.
The one penny allocation is being reimbursed, so it's not as if.
Okay.
The impact this has been.
Okay. I just want to say that I am very glad that we, uh, getting the three, uh, hybrid vehicles this year, one Ford and two Toyotas. So it's a good start. Okay. Uh, do we have a motion on that?
Comments? Have we gone to public comment yet?
Yeah, we, uh, we'll entertain a motion. We can go to comments.
Yeah. Yes.
Motion approved?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Um, are there any public comments on this item? I don't see anybody here. Are there any public comments on this item? No. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, Mr. Jump, do we have any attendees wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have a raised hand at this time.
Bonita's Coolas five nine five Peninsula Avenue. Uh, I'm really looking forward to having this internal auditor who's going to be able to come in and give you guys an idea of life is, life expectancy of these vehicles moving forward, uh, the repair cost, uh, to retain whatever his life of, is left of them. And I'm pretty sure that this internal auditor is going to be coming in very, very soon. Those seven SUVs, that does sound like a lot of money. The four hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's half a million dollars. And I just, I want to know, are all the police cruisers going to be, uh, SUVs at some point moving forward? And, and how many years will that take for that transition to where they'll all be SUVs? And, um, I do remember this item was pulled back from, I believe, the December meeting. So I was happy it got brought up again. I do believe the numbers were switched around a little bit and on the December agenda, it looked a lot clearer. So I did want to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Jem, do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
We do not have any other attendees at this time.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second row call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Maryland who's this?
Yes, thank you. If you guys don't mind, we'd like to take five minutes recess. We now reconvene the BOC meeting at nine oh nine PM. We go into the ordinance of resolutions, item number eleven, the ordinance two thousand twenty dash forty-one. This is the application twenty dash one forty-two rezoning Papadakis four fifty-five Cypress Street. This is the first reading and this is quasi, quasi-traditional. City Attorney, if you please read the title and explain the quasi-traditional process.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-one, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida for zero point two four acres of property located at four fifty-five Cypress Street on the north side of Cypress Street between North Levis Avenue and North Gross Avenue from R seventy A, single family residential district to R sixty, one and two family residential district, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. There will be a second reading held on January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, and also on January sixth, twenty twenty-one. I'll explain the quasi-traditional procedures. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. That was the reading of the quasi-traditional proceedings. I'd like to swear in anyone that's going to testify today. Ms. Vincent, you swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Renee Vincent, Planning Director. This is application twenty dash one forty-two. The applicant is Bobby, uh, I think the pronunciation is Papadakis, um, for property at four fifty-five, uh, East Cypress Street. This is on the north side of Cypress between Levis and Gross. Uh, the current zoning on the property is R seventy A. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to R sixty, um, for the purposes of being able to renovate the structure, uh, and convert it into a duplex. Um, so in order to do so, um, the, the thing, the zoning does need, would need to be amended in order to accommodate that request. Um, there is no, uh, request to the change in land use. The, the proposed zoning is consistent with the underlying land use of residential urban, which is seven and a half units per acre for residential. Um, the property, um, is also located in the city's historic district and it is identified as a contributing structure. Um, it is somewhat, I'll say run down at this point. Um, but so there is a bit of an added layer of protection and that any changes to the property as it goes through a renovation will have to go, uh, to the store, the city's historic preservation board. And that was a factor in our recommendation of approval. Um, the property is also directly adjacent to, um, the property that the board recently rezoned to R sixty, uh, for the purposes of doing two single family homes. Uh, the habitat property is directly adjacent. Um, the remaining property surrounding is R seventy A, single family residential. Um, under the review criteria, we do find that it is consistent, uh, with the, the required review criteria. Um, and again, especially given the, the added layer of protection that, that it is in the city's, um, historic preservation district. Planning and zoning board did review this on December fourteenth and recommended approval unanimously. We've had no, um, no public comment on this, um, or opposition, I should say. And, uh, staff recommendation is to approve as presented. And I think the applicant is on the Zoom call. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. It's appropriate time.
You know, tender your staff report into evidence?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any commission questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just, just for clarification. So I mean, this is ultimately increasing, um, the residents by a hundred percent, right? Um, from one unit to two units on this used property?
Correct.
But the future land use allows up to a certain amount of per acre and that falls within that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Seeing none. Um, we'll go ahead and ask, uh, Irene, do you have any, uh, emails or correspondence on this?
No emails.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jump, is there anyone on Zoom call that would like to speak at the, for this agenda item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. That's a quick quasi-traditional hearing. Um, is there anything else that you wanted to add in our, in closing, uh, Renee?
Uh, no.
Okay. And your staff recommendation is?
To approve.
So Mayor, it's back to the commission for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item? The chair will obtain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Row call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Maryland who's this?
Yes. Next is item number twelve, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero-two, ratification of executive orders. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Yes, Mayor. This is resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero-two, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order twenty twenty-one dash zero-two and extending the declaration of local state of emergency to January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
do with more in relationship to the Shepherd Center because it's directly across the street from the Shepherd Center, and they have outdoor dining area for the fuel bar, which is attached to the Anytime Fitness. And we had some issues with trespassing and using the property there. We got with those businesses. We have trespass authorization for them. We dealt with it, and we haven't recently had an increase in those as well. So again, I can't throw a nexus, show a nexus between the Anytime Fitness and the removal of the benches in regards to calls for service going up. If you look at page two, it kind of breaks it down, the comparison. We went from January 1, 2020, to March 31, which I labeled at that time pre-COVID because we did see or had a possibility of seeing something different during the lockdown that went down and the ramifications from the executive orders. So we went from January 1, 2020, to March 31, 2020. It lists the incidents, the Marchman Acts, the disturbance calls, the trespass warnings, et cetera. Notable issue associated was 22, so we looked at about three months we had in the area of where the benches and the library were. We had about 22 incidences, which works out to about seven per month. Then we looked to April 1, 2020, to August 11, 2020, which was this time in that area when, after COVID had come along, we started seeing the difference in interactions in society. So I took that date to August 11 because that was about the time that the Commission voted to temporarily remove the benches to see how it would work. During that time, we had 52 incidences, which is about four and a half months, or 11 incidents at that location per month. Post removal of benches, August 12 to November 5, we looked again. The incidence went down to about 15 over three months, which is down to five incidents per month. So we definitely saw a notable decrease in the calls for service and the quality of life issues that we had seen prior to the bench removal. As I addressed before, if you look at the three that I put out, initially, when the benches were removed, what it appeared to do is push those that were normally just congregating, loitering, and we've had problems there. They moved it across the street to, directly across the street where there's other benches. They began to, there were some violations there. We had a presence there. They, over time, kind of dispersed that area. And obviously, there's some migration somewhere. We didn't see a heavy amount of calls go up in downtown area. We didn't see a heavy of calls, and one of the ones we looked at before was 210 South Pinellas, the arcade. We didn't see an increase necessarily there. We have a consistent call for service there, but again, I believe that's because it's location near the Shepherd Center because they sit on the north side of the Shepherd Center. Over time, over the past couple of months, since I wrote this, we started seeing some gatherings on private property. There was one business that is empty along the area across the street from the Shepherd Center, which was the old Dan's Pawn Shop, and there used to be a donut, well, years ago, there used to be a donut store, and I think it was the Jerk's Center since then, but they've moved. That's, the building itself is abandoned. It is owned, and we started seeing issues there, littering, encampment, urination, those kind of things, open alcohol. We got with the business owners, found out who it is. They're selling, they sold one part of the property, they were buying another part of the property. We got with both of them. We now have trespass authorization there because they didn't want the issues that were going on from that time, and I have an action team with Officer Boone, you probably have heard his name plenty of times by now, he's heading it up for me, very into connecting with the community. We work with businesses all the time. He's done a fantastic job in working with people to help alleviate the quality of life issues and the criminal violations and the ordinance violations that are going along with this. Recently, we haven't had that many problems in the area that are visible as well. We contacted businesses, we keep them in constant contact with them. Those that are, agree to give us trespass authorization for the property, so they have these problems there, we're working with them as well. As you know, we have two homeless outreach officers that are working. Over the time that we've had homeless outreach program, we've placed, made hundreds of placements to help. The problem before that we have seen, and the chief has addressed it as, he's addressed it to you as chronic homeless, there's obviously, when you have, when you use words, there's a bunch of definitions, but we're talking about the ongoing issues that we're having are with, if you call it chronic, it's the anti-normative, antisocial behavior homeless. Those are the ones that have refused assistance. We've offered them assistance, we're trying to get them help, get them resources, and they say no. We continue to do that, we continue open to, up to these things, but it's the small percentage that are continuing to cause these issues. The issue at the library, I think, has improved dramatically. The appearance of the library has improved dramatically, the calls for service have gone down, the complaints in area businesses around the library and from the library have gone down. So at this point, I would say that the removal of the benches has made an impact on calls for service, quality of life issues in and around the library itself. I'll be open, any questions you guys have?
Thank you, Major Trill. And also want to thank all the police officers for their hard work and dedication and the good service that they're providing to the people of Tarpon Springs. Mr. Licorius, how many benches were removed from there?
I don't remember offhand. Tom, are you still on, do you remember?
I believe it was two.
Two benches?
I believe it was, there's, on, one on each side of the front.
Okay, so...
Could have been more, but, four?
I think it was more, for sure.
Okay.
I believe it was six, so.
Really?
Tom says he believes it was six.
So, look at this report, it's obviously that by removing those benches, the people have no place to sit down, so they were just relocated. They went to different places, they knew really there's some fear from town. They're staying in Tarpon Springs. You agree with that, Major?
The ones with whom we have the constant contact, I would agree.
Yes.
Seeing the same people on different kind of calls, just different places. The concern, I believe, was from some, either on the border or in the community, was if we remove these, they're just going to go here, and we'll have the same issues with the Marchman Acts, and the, if you have read this, what the city has found and had to clean up on site, but we really haven't seen that migration downtown. And again, it's not concentrated in another area that we can pinpoint out in public in front of businesses that are causing issues. We still have the continued problem that we've had over time, but again, the removal of those benches, I cannot find evidence to say, well, they've all moved here, and then now we're having the issue. There was a slight pickup at the bus pickup, I believe it was at Court and alternate 19 or Pinellas Avenue. There's a bench there for bus, but again, that's, if there's trespass authority, if they're violating ordinance, then we deal with it there, but I think there was a slight pickup there, but other than that, we don't see the migration of the large amount of people that were at, in front of the library, move somewhere else.
Do you think they left town? They're still here, I'm sure.
I don't believe they left town.
They're here, so they went to a different place. So obviously, we did not fix the issue, the issue's still there. We just relocated.
We're not going to fix a homeless, a homeless issue with removal of a benches.
Yeah, I don't think we did. So we just actually relocated. So I just don't see that we should continue removing benches and moving the issue from one location to another, in my opinion. And I'm looking forward to see, to have the town hall meeting with the stakeholders to discuss the homeless problem, because the homeless problem is not just for Tarpon Springs, it's a national problem, so it's something that needs to be addressed. I just don't see that keep moving benches and putting bendy on the issue is going to take care of it, in my opinion.
All right, okay, is that...
You agree?
Well, it's, it can affect quality of life issues. It's not going to solve the homeless problem, it can, it can address quality of life issues in certain areas.
Yeah.
It's not going to get rid of the homeless problem and get them off the streets by removing benches, but again, if we have an area that has become a gathering place for anti-normative, antisocial, when I say that, it's, they don't want to go along with getting off the streets, et cetera. If you have that in a certain area, it can have an effect on that area of those businesses.
Correct, but they went someplace else. And if I remember correctly, just a couple of days ago, we received an email with an issue that we got, and the business is right next to the Publix.
Yeah, we researched that, that has not gone up any noticeable. We've always had problems, and we've addressed those. We do have trespass authorization for there. We've asked the businesses to call us as well when there are issues to address those, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr, any comments?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So this is an update of the bench removal. Is there any more discussion, like, are we going to add the benches back? Are we going to keep them gone? Or is, I mean, what are we going from here, from the update? I'm not sure who I should look at, City Manager?
It's the Board's decision.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the update, Major. I appreciate the detail and the backup. Also appreciate what Tarpon Springs does and a proactive stance for the homeless community, and also how to address it sensitively. I'm in support of keeping the benches away from the front of the library. I do see that there's individuals that utilize benches across the street. I get that, there's going to, that's going to happen, but from like an aesthetic standpoint and from a cleanliness standpoint, what you talked about, to prevent maybe a hotspot of gathering in front of the library specifically, I think it's a good idea to keep the benches away for now. And there's also plenty of other benches in the city and area if the individual needed to use a bench, that there's, within a short distance, they could utilize a bench still. So from a, the safety standpoint, just from a visual standpoint, when someone's going to the library to not have a gathering out front, I think it serves, I think that's a good reason to not have the benches out front right now, so. Did you have a comment on that?
Well, two things. When they did move across the street, they're no longer, there's a couple people that still utilize those, it's not the mass gathering anymore.
Right.
And number two, the problems we were having in front of the library wasn't just that there were people there, there were fights there, there was alcohol abuse there, open containers, Marchman Acts where people would pass out across the sidewalk, so people had to walk out around them. Food was left there constantly, the city had to go by every morning and clean that up, and there was other quality of life issues, as were mentioned in this backup.
So it's an improvement of quality of life in front of the library.
I would say, if you've driven there, you'd see a notable difference from earlier in the year.
Agreed. Thank you.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I also noticed a huge, huge difference, Major. We appreciate all y'all's help and response to the, to the calls. We can't encourage people enough to call y'all when there's something going on that they should call you for. So for me, I've noticed a tremendous difference in front of the library, and for the time being, I don't see any need to jump to put the benches back for now. I'll tell you that I have had firsthand contact with Officer Boone, and he is definitely being very proactive in his approach with the businesses and property owners and residents alike, so we're definitely thankful for him, and I think that there's a noticeable difference based on his impact in itself, aside from the library benches. So for me, I don't, I don't see any need to put the benches back yet. I think it's still maybe a little bit too early to tell the good that it's done, given that it's only been, I don't know, however long. So I don't see a need to put them back anytime soon, and I think we'll continue to monitor the situation and just give thanks to the Department and Boone for me. Thanks.
Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank you, Major Trill. It's a super detailed presentation, super detailed memorandum here in terms of your observations and the rest of our officers, so I really appreciate you giving this to us and keeping us updated. I think this whole, this whole thing has been a, kind of another notch in the, you know, in the feather in a cap, whatever you want to call it. I think it's another great advantage of having our own local police department, being that I serve on the homeless leadership board for the county, and I see so many other cities struggling right now because COVID-19 has drastically reduced the amount of people that are able to get into shelters and able to get assistance. And so without our police officers having our homeless outreach program, reaching out to these people, keeping our streets clean, a lot of other cities have, you know, done a lot worse than us throughout COVID-19 because they don't have that extra layer of protection. They're just kind of reliant on a lot of the nonprofits that currently don't have the funding or currently don't have the employment to go out there and get that done. So I really just want to express my gratitude to our police department because I think that's something that's often overlooked, is our homeless outreach program, and how much, you know, worse off some other cities are that don't have that available to them. That being said, I think the removal of the benches, you know, I opposed it in the first place, I think it's kind of a slippery slope because, you know, obviously, it's not the be-all, end-all solution, but I think once you start taking out benches in one area, it's a slippery slope to just say, hey, if it works here, it might work here, and then, you know, sooner rather than later, you just start removing all the benches in the city. So I'd like to see the benches returned.
Commissioner Licorius?
Thank you, Mayor. Major Trill, thank you for the data. That's very helpful. I think, you know, without the data, we do a lot of arm-waving, arguing with each other over what's better, what's not, and I think basically the data tells the story, and I very much appreciate that, and the help of your police department in keeping tabs on it. The whole idea behind the benches were that they basically attracted the homeless at the library, and it created issues with the group that you had mentioned that sometimes doesn't want help and just basically do what they want to do without taking into consideration anyone else nearby. And I think there were some problems with some of our families visiting, not wanting to go there. and he is definitely being very proactive in his approach with the businesses and property owners and residents alike. So we're definitely thankful for him, and I think that there's a noticeable difference based on his impact in itself, aside from the library benches. So for me, I don't see any need to put the benches back yet. I think it's still maybe a little bit too early to tell the good that it's done, given that it's only been, I don't know, however long. So I don't see any need to put them back anytime soon, and I think we'll continue to monitor the situation and just give thanks to the department and Boone for me. Thanks.
Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank you, Major Trill. It's a super detailed presentation, super detailed memorandum here in terms of your observations and the rest of our officers. So I really appreciate you giving this to us and keeping us updated. I think this whole thing has been a kind of another notch in the, you know, in the feather in a cap, whatever you want to call it. I think it's another great advantage of having our own local police department, being that I serve on the homeless leadership board for the county, and I see so many other cities struggling right now because COVID-19 has drastically reduced the amount of people that are able to get into shelters and able to get assistance. And so without our police officers having our homeless outreach program, reaching out to these people, keeping our streets clean, a lot of other cities have, you know, done a lot worse than us throughout COVID-19 because they don't have that extra layer of protection. They're just kind of reliant on a lot of the nonprofits that currently don't have the funding or currently don't have the employment to go out there and get that done. So I really just want to express my gratitude to our police department, because I think that's something that's often overlooked, is our homeless outreach program, and how much, you know, worse off some other cities are that don't have that available to them. That being said, I think the removal of the benches, you know, I opposed it in the first place. I think it's kind of a slippery slope, because, you know, obviously, it's not the be all end all solution. But I think once you start taking out benches in one area, it's a slippery slope to just say, hey, if it works here, it might work here. And then, you know, sooner rather than later, you just start removing all the benches in the city. So I'd like to see the benches returned.
Commissioner Seguras?
Thank you, Mayor. Major Trill, thank you for the data. That's very helpful. I think, you know, without the data, we do a lot of arm waving, arguing with each other over what's better, what's not. And I think basically, the data tells the story, and I very much appreciate that and the help of your police department in keeping tabs on it. The whole idea behind the benches were that they basically attracted the homeless at the library, and it created issues with the group that you had mentioned that sometimes doesn't want help and just basically do what they want to do without taking into consideration anyone else nearby. And I think there were some problems with some of our families visiting, not wanting to go there, going elsewhere, Palm Harbor, the whole thing. So I think it was a good move. And we had Attorney Theo Phillips come and ask us to take some action. And I'm very proud of this commission of taking action. Maybe everyone wasn't on board with it, but something had to be done, and we took a chance, and it worked out, as far as this goes. When we first discussed this item, I think we kept getting wrapped around the axle with the community-wide problem, and I kept repeating at the meeting, my interest was just to improve the area around the library. That was it. I wasn't looking at what was going to be going down at the Shepherd Center by Mr. Bill's Donut Shop or anything like that. Those problems aren't going to go away until we do something. And at the library, the solution was the benches. That doesn't mean library benches are a solution around town. Different places are going to require different solutions, different sort of things to try and improve things, not to victimize the homeless people, but just to basically try and bring some normalcy to what we've got here in town. The one telling item, and I don't mind saying it, was the, and you may not, I think you may have been alluding, I think it was a number two report where, the second report, or maybe it was the last report, where it was either the sanitation or Parks and Streets Division had the feces in the bushes, and that was their standard of how things have improved. That fell off. That was gone.
That fell off. The garbage in and of itself fell off, and people were actually using the receptacles for garbage, is what they observed.
Right. And that was a public health issue along with the COVID that we talked about. So it was never to solve the city's problem. It was just to address the area around the library where many of the people that I spoke to, that was their focus on the homeless. Now, would that have gotten better? It's only natural that you're going to start hearing of other areas being brought to the surface. So I don't know where we go from here. I know the one area that I've been focusing in on with Corporal Boone is the area by the public bathrooms that was at the north side of East Tarpon Avenue there by Fackless's Department Store. And I think that the police department is making some inroads, continuing to make some improvements there. And there's one businessman there that calls me just to keep me abreast of how things are going. Some of the properties have changed ownership. I know there's interest in the new owners of doing what the recommendations are that the police department has put forward, and I think there's going to be improvements there, too. So we installed the lights down the alley. I think that's got a lot to do with what's going on over there. So we just need to continue working at it. I'm looking forward to the town hall meeting in February to discuss this. And it is a sensitive issue, but nevertheless, it's a real issue that we need to contend with for our residents. So thank you. Thank you, Major Trill. Thanks.
We're going to go to public comments. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak on this item? Here, none. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails were received.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Well, it seems to me the consensus is to give the benches away from the library.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, the intent of this meeting was supposed to have taken in December was to decide whether we would continue leaving them away from the library.
This is just an update, but I, during the town hall meeting that we're going in February, I think will be a discussion to have. Is that what you asked?
No, no, I think the idea was for this, the purpose of this meeting that was supposed to be in December was to make a decision of leaving the library. It was temporary. The benches were temporary. They were going to leave them when we first decided in August, and we would revisit it three months later. And that's what this meeting was.
Correct. Right now, they gave us an update, and seems like the consensus here is to to leave them off and continue to monitor the situation. And I would say in February, when we're going to have the town hall meeting with all the stakeholders, I think it's something that we need to discuss again. Everybody agrees with that?
We don't need a vote or anything.
No, it's just a question. Well, that concludes the regulation agenda. And we'll go to staff comments. Major Young, you got any comments? So thank you for serving meeting with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say tonight, our hearts and prayers go out to Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, loss of Corporal Levine, and can't imagine what his family's going through today. Our prayers are with them.
Okay. Mr. Trask?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Licorice?
Yes, the one thing I want to talk to you about is the internal auditor position. We have an update to send to you, Commissioner Vaticiottis asked today about an update, and we were waiting for an update. I think where we are now is we've got a set of questions from the candidate. And again, this is your employee, so these are only questions you can answer or somebody you deal with. I think the four major questions that are in contention, before we get a definitive answer, is an additional budget items for training and certifications. There's nothing presently in the budget, and I think she's asking confirmation that there will be something added in the budget for that. There's a question of vacation time, where I guess presently she gets five weeks and two weeks, six weeks. She's asking for six weeks. The highest vacation of a department head here is four weeks. So it'd be an extension of two more weeks than anybody else get. That's a request. The second issue is the ability to use that vacation time that she's getting during the course of her first year here, since she had trips that were canceled, and the airlines have given them the next year to go. The ability to take at least four weeks during the time she originally employed with us. And the last question deals with a flexible work calendar, which includes possibly the hours of coming in 7:00 a.m. till 3:00, 3:30 p.m., which I'm thinking is due to traffic. And also, is there some ability on some days in a flexible manner to work remotely? Somehow, I think we have to answer those questions, whether, you know, and again, I don't think it's, I don't know if we want to wait for two weeks, if we wanted designate a person on the commission or the mayor to talk about these issues. If we've got some answers right now, I know everybody wants to move this along and get an auditor on board. But these were the questions when we inquired of her yesterday that she still has, but before accepting. So I'm just bringing these to the board and seeing how the board wants to deal with these questions.
Can you provide that to us in writing, what she was?
I can, but again, you know.
Yes.
I don't know if you have a method we want to deal with them before waiting two weeks and dealing with it at a meeting.
Well, if you provide us with that information, we can actually, you know, respond individually.
Does it go to the HR director, or is it going to Mark, you think?
Yeah.
I'd probably say, yeah, this is from Jane Niff, so probably to Jane Niff to help her with the negotiation, to finalize this negotiation and know if we have somebody on board or know if we have to go to, you know, the next options.
Vice Mayor, you had assumptions that you was all?
Yeah, I just want, I mean, thinking it through, so if, let's say there's four, there's four options. I'm just thinking, it might get a little convoluted. But if we all send our responses to Jane on, do we agree with six weeks? Or do we want to come up with a medium five weeks, the vacation time? She wants to take four weeks vacation right when she gets hired. Flex time, seven to 3:30, and then remote working. So it's pretty much, is it just going to be the consensus of what the answers are? Is what the answer, final answer would be, or how would that work?
What I think is, if the HR director will provide us with that information, all these questions, and then we just reply to her, what we think. Right now, I don't think we prepare, I'm not prepared to answer all these questions, not knowing all the details.
But it would be the consensus of the board, right? Because, I mean, you and I could have differing opinions, but you and three other commissioners could have the same opinion on one answer, and then I agree with two other commissioners on another answer, right? So I'm just trying to think this one through, and it's a little bit.
When's our next meeting, Mark?
Our next meeting would be on the 26.
26? Well, if we get all the information and we placed that, you know, we didn't discuss that on the 26.
Yeah, I mean, I could make a, I could provide answers tomorrow for most of the questions, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, something else to consider, and I don't know, maybe your city manager can confirm this. She mentioned that she, the reason why it was that gap between when she was here and, you know, we offered her the job, and when she took the job was because she had like some monthly meeting with a board. So I just want to make sure that if we are going to get these answers in, we make sure we get them in in time for her to go to that meeting and tell her board, yes, I'm leaving, or no, I'm not leaving. Because if we don't, she might say, oh, well, then I need to wait till the February meeting to tell them whether or not I'm going. So just to help her make her decision as quick as she can, I think time is of, kind of, time's on the table. And is that right, Mark? Didn't she say she?
Yes. I believe it was towards the middle or end of January, when that board meeting was. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah. So that's just my point, is that if we're going to go the route of saying, hey, we all answer this individually, which I think might get a little bit complicated, then it's got to be really soon.
But the next meeting that we have scheduled is on 26, so unless we'll have another meeting.
I mean, it's only four questions. If you guys just want to go down them right now.
We're meeting Friday, don't we?
Mayor, I think, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I would have a knee-jerk reaction answering those this evening. I'd have to think about them first.
I'm the same way.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't want to do that, because this is an important decision. And I don't have a problem with waiting until the January 26th, I think. Is that when you said? Yeah. So, I mean, we've waited this long. So I, and I'm not sure how it's going to work out. And some of these are very reasonable, others is completely inconsistent with what our policy's been. So I want to give that some thought. And I don't want to just off the cuff, give some kind of cavalier answer tonight and send the wrong message. So I don't have an issue with waiting, but that's just me. Thank you.
Commissioner Terrapin?
I mean, I definitely think that we should be afforded, at a minimum, not to respond to tonight. I mean, I don't have an issue with replying, you know, to the HR director or Mark tomorrow, but at a minimum, I'd like to have the questions, you know, in writing that we can at least think over and then respond. I don't need to wait until the 26th, but I don't necessarily want to, you know, make a decision tonight either.
The only thing is, if we don't meet in the meeting, I mean, I'm not ready to answer today, but I think in the meeting is going to be the way so we can have consensus, you know? By doing with correspondence, I don't think we're going to be as clear and.
And the questions aren't that difficult. I mean, I'm good to respond in writing tomorrow, just not tonight.
I'm not either, yeah.
Mayor, the other thing Ms. Niffen had in her memorandum, it was either Ms. Niffen or the city manager, that I think was Ms. Niffen, that Ms. Niffen's already answered some questions. And as a result, there's been new questions.
Yes.
So these are not the first questions that Mrs. Niffen has answered, but this is a result of new questions. And what I'm concerned about is if we give answers tonight, we may have more answers, more questions in a few days. That needs, and so my feeling is, on the 26th, it's not just us five. We need to invite Mrs. Kessel back in front of us to get this out on the table. That's how I feel about it. I mean, I think we could do it in a very reasonable and professional way, but she had an opportunity to answer, ask questions of us that night of the interview. And I don't see why this couldn't be a phase two to get that out. And basically, if she has additional questions in a week, then I'm not sure what our position would be. I mean, after that meeting, I don't know what our position would be, but I don't think we can continue kicking the can down the road. But I don't want to tell her one thing tonight, for example, and then there's another question that comes up tomorrow.
Yeah.
When if she was in front of us, we'd have gotten the whole story, you know, what is your problem? You know, or what is the issue with you? What is it that you'd like to know? We're here. So that's why I prefer to wait until the end of January.
And I agree with that. I'm not in a position to answer those questions today, tonight, without having been prepared for it, read it and all that. So I guess, Mr. Licorice, if we can communicate with the applicant and just let them know that we're going to be getting back to her, or maybe she wants to come here and talk to us at the same time.
I'm ready to tell her that she's going to need to be here on 26.
26, yes.
On the 26. And have all of her questions ready for us, because we need a decision.
That would be the best way to handle it.
Here on the 26.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. I think it's time to at least start putting the old landfill, which is the 60-something acres at Tom Funkchen was talking about for the Dodge Ram, on an agenda item to at least start looking at some alternatives. If we need to look at some type of authority that gets put in place, if it's a sports authority that goes after grants, if it needs to be moved to a different holding entity as well. I'm not really sure. But there's a significant amount of acreage there. And looking at, via email from Mark, he sent me a memo, I think from the planning department, that talked about deficiencies with different baseball diamonds, softball diamonds, tennis courts, open fields to other aspects from the comp plan. And I think this large piece of land can help accomplish a lot of that and also potentially provide some green space as well. With Mears going through here and also looking at Distend as a pull-through to Mears, I think this is time to at least start putting us on the books to talk about some different ideas of what can be done here. Secondly, I sent, or I had some discussions via email as well about the cemetery expansion. I'm not sure if there's any more status on that, if we're going to be seeing irrigation installed soon so we could start seeing some grass. And then we've received some emails from residents pertaining to that. Looks like it's been a standstill. I think Paul Smith mentioned that it's actually, they're waiting on the the concrete structure, but I think that they could go ahead and install the irrigation system in the meantime around that, so they don't have to install in that area to at least get some grass and plants and to at least make it look presentable, so it doesn't sit like that for a few more months. And then my last question is going to be, Mr. Trask sent an email, and Ms. Jacobs sent an email today as well about our meeting on Friday. Mr. Trask, would that be a decision made on Friday in the meeting, if those would be right in at that point? Or is there something that we would do in advance for that?
You can either handle it on Friday or do it today. It was, the way that I prepared the memo, it was basically direction given for the Friday meeting.
Okay. But we could do it tonight if we wanted to.
Yes, you can do it tonight. There's nothing prohibiting you from doing that tonight.
Okay. I mean, from my standpoint, I think it would be best to review the emails. And then we've reviewed a lot of our emails ourselves already. But to review the emails individually, instead of having three and a half hours read in the public record, that way we review them individually. We could review them on our own time. And then they're added to the record in the backup, accepted in the backup. I think that was just from an efficiency standpoint and respect for applicant and respect for everyone as part of the meeting. I think it's good to take that approach. So, thank you.
Commissioner Terrapin?
Thank you. Yeah, I just have one quick comment. I sent the memo this afternoon regarding the meeting on Friday. I checked with the city attorney, and it is a continuance of the meeting. So he advised us in an abundance of caution to send the.
us in an abundance of caution to send a memo to y'all asking for an excused absence. And this is the only opportunity I have to do that prior to the meeting. So if you wouldn't mind excusing my absence, it's a one agenda item, I don't have any intentions to participate or vote, so I would appreciate a excused absence for Friday.
Aren't you just still excused? I mean, since it's.
Well, I, I am, because it's a continuance, but just, I mean, I'm good with that.
You just leave for confirmation.
Yeah, just confirmation, just in an abundance of caution, given the sensitivity of the issue.
Well, I will ask for a motion to excuse Commission Tarpe from the next, next meeting on Friday. Motion to excuse. Second. Oral call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lozus?
Yes, thank you.
Do we want to make a decision on the three hours of emails?
Well, we haven't decided yet, we're still. Did you finish?
Yes, thank you.
Commission Donovan?
I have no commissioner comments. Do you want me to respond to the email issue now, or do you want to finish?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So from my understanding, based on the email we got today, essentially, it's saying, we're going to review all the emails that we've already read up to this point, but they're not going to be read aloud at the meeting. So essentially, the only thing we're debating tonight is whether or not there's going to be a three-plus hour tape recording of all the emails we've received on Friday? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine to, you know, forego that process. I, we're, we're getting the emails, a lot of them are template emails, and I know some of them will, will take longer than that allotted time to get read into the record. So I'd, I'd be comfortable just knowing that, that we're reading these emails and that they are public record, rather than hearing a three and a half hour tape recording.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Tiqueras?
I, I have a comment, but I just, do you want to talk about the emails right now, or?
Or, go ahead and do, say your comment, and please respond about the emails as well.
The, the only thing I wanted to talk about, and then I'll talk about the emails, and Mayor, please don't take this the wrong way. It's just an observation that there's a lot going on in the world today, Washington, COVID, the whole thing, and, and I would just like for us to be a little more tolerant with what we see here. Not where people would be disrespectful, but just a little more tolerant, and people are allowing them to express their First Amendment rights, and that's all. I don't think peaceful demonstration is bad, I think it's good. We may not like what we see, and, and I've been, I've gotten a lot of it in, in my, especially when I was city manager and, and since I've been commissioner, but it, it's something that comes with part of the job. So I just want us to be a little more tolerant with what we see and hear that goes on, and, and then, and then just, that's it. I just, sometimes I think we, we tend to overreact, and, and I think we push in the wrong way, and, and it upsets people. So I, I don't think that that needs to be done. With regard to the, the emails, my, the, it would be very, very convenient to read the emails into the record, the way Attorney Trask is described. I'm just, with this particular item and the amount of emotion and time and effort that's gone into it, there's always, there's already a whole lot of comments being made as far as the process goes, and it's not being arms-length and, and things. And I think that this would just throw gasoline on the fire for something like that. I might not be, I might be wrong, but I, I just have a feeling that there's going to be a, a very adverse reaction to doing something like this. I don't know, and I may be wrong, have we ever done this before?
Almost every city that I represent does it that way. They don't read it into the record. It's almost like treating you commissioners as third graders because of the fact that you don't, they, the public doesn't think that you have the ability to read, and that's the way, you know, you, you know, I brought up the issue, actually Commissioner Carr asked a question, and I followed up with it, but I don't know of any city that reads it into the record that we represent. It's provided to the commission in a packet form, and you can read it on your own, but the, having to read it into the record is time, time-consuming, you don't really gain anything, other than the show of having it happen, so.
I understand completely, and if we had some rule in place that was black and white that we could fall on, that, that we've done before, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I don't want to wind up, from my perspective, setting a trend by this being the first time. Was this done, now, I'm not talking about other cities, I'm talking about Tarper Springs. Has this been done to your recent knowledge, or, I mean, the recent past?
Not since I've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I can add to it, Commissioner, I think this was something we just put in place for COVID, for people who didn't want to be there, to send comments in, to be read into the record. This, we never did this before until we had the, you know, no-audience meetings and the Zoom, and we really haven't taken it off. It's really more of a COVID situation of, of having the citizens have an option to do that. Now, I'm sure when we did that, we didn't anticipate people putting out form letters, sending them out to thousands, thousands of people to do, but, but, but this is a COVID thing with Zooms and, and sending things to read in the record, not a regular procedure. We have not done that anywhere else than something we put in place for the meetings with the restricted attendance and the Zoom.
I know, but, but, and I know there's been some questionable information that's been put out that's precipitated those emails as well, and I understand all of that. It's just that I, I don't want to wind up giving the appearance that we're curteiling, curtailing not any due process, but the public process, and, and obviously, I'm just one person here talking, and I'll, I'll, you know, we're going to do what the majority of us want to do. I'm just a little overly sensitive with this particular item, with what's gone on, and, and as much acrimony that's been expressed to do something like this, when I would suspect that most people are going to say they, one, we don't have a, we never covered that anywhere, that we could do this, and then all of a sudden, we're going to do that because we've got three hours worth of emails to be read in. I'll be sitting here for three hours if we read them. I'm just a little concerned about that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I got, well, I, I have several things that I'd like to, to talk about. First, I would like to wish everyone to have a happy and a healthy New Year. I'd like to answer one of the, one of the public comments that we had. Want to make sure people understand that when and where myself or the Board of Commissioners and the staff are going on vacation on their own time, on their own expense, is nobody's concerned. We have a right to go wherever we want to go, and not missing any, and missing any, any, any meetings. In regards to the coronavirus, the city, the BOC, the staff, we all follow the CDC guidelines. I'd like to answer the, the comment that, or suggestion that was made by Commissioner Vaticiatus to be more tolerant. I had asked, very politely, the person who was holding the, the sign, to take the sign and go in the back, in the back of the auditorium, where would be no destruction and not blocking anybody's view. I don't see any reason for that, and I don't see anything wrong with that at all. And I can ask City Commissioner, City Attorney, Mr. Trask, for his opinion on that.
So any distraction that's interrupting the action of the commission is something that needs to be addressed by the chair, whether it's someone standing at the podium and not sitting down after they've used their time up, whether they're screaming from the back of the audience, or whether they're holding up poster boards that in some way distract the commission during the meeting, those are all things that should be regulated. As for, and I, I spoke to the mayor in, in advance of the hearing relative to the person using the poster boards, and it was very distracting, in my, my point of view. I haven't heard from the other commissioners, and they can give their thoughts on that, but I thought it was very distracting, not only to the audience, but also to the commission. And it also cut off my view of several people in the audience, which made me uncomfortable. And I'm sure that it also cut off the view of those people behind the signs that were being held up at the last meeting, of the people that are standing at the podium, which is directly in front of me. So, so during my discussion with the mayor, I advised the mayor that that distraction can be handled by way of allowing that continued free speech to take place by allowing the placard and the person to be at the back of the room, where it doesn't distract the audience, or distract the commission, and I think that that was what the mayor was attempting to do. The individual obviously didn't like that option and therefore left, but you have to deal with those distractions so that you can handle the business of the day. That's my opinion.
Thank you. The other thing that I want to talk about is the request to, or the, the suggestion to not to read the emails during the meeting, but actually, we read it as, as a Board of Commissioners. Even though that I think it's good to say three and a half hours of the meeting, I think in, in this case, there are people expecting us to read those emails on the, here in the meeting, because that's what, that's what they stated in the, in, in their emails, and if we don't do that, they're gonna, they're not going to be happy at all, and even though that we're not obligated to do, to do that, I think it's the right thing to do, in my opinion. So we have three commissioners that say to not to read them, and you have me and Commissioner Vaticiatus to do such. So you got the majority to go ahead and not to read them on the, during the meeting.
Let me just clarify something.
Excuse me. As, I'm sorry, I was, I was wrong about that. It's actually a two and two.
So I'll, I'll tell you this, Mayor, if it was me, and it's, I'm looking at it not just this subject, right?
Yeah.
The emails, and given that I've served on this board, and we've never had, had it to where emails from outside of this commission can be read into the record, I would, I would fall on the side of Vice Mayor and Commissioner Donovan, in the sense that they are still part of the record, right? They're still part of the backup, they're still at the dais, they've already been sent to the commission, they're still inputted into the record. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to vote on it because it's the issue, but if it was to arise before us where I was not conflicted out, that's the side I would fall on. They're still part of the record.
Yeah. Well, the reason I think I, I prefer to read them is because the residents are expecting us to do it this time. They already expressed their opinion that's what they want, so. I don't know, do we have to vote on that, or just consensus?
Well, it looks to me like it's a two-two split, and where we left off at the last meeting, actually, how we started the meeting, how we left off the last meeting, it was, I summarized the fact that we were actually going to read them out loud.
Okay.
And so, at this point in my mind, there's no further action that needs to take place, unless there is a change in that, and it's a two-two split right now, from what I can see, and so there would be no change, and therefore, they should be read into the record.
Okay.
That's how I see it from the lawyer's side.
From a parliamentarian's perspective?
I'm sorry?
From a parliamentarian's perspective.
Well, yes, well, a two-two split, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I agree, even though, you know, I was kind of on the losing end of this one. I mean, if it's a two-two split, then it should proceed.
Okay.
So they, they are going to be read into the record?
But if it's all right with you, under COVID circumstances, we're going to take that off the provisions for future meetings, if that's all right with the board?
I think this is an item that we need to discuss during the time when we have the rules and regulations for the meetings.
Bring it up on the twenty-sixth, I mean, as an agenda item? Is that, we're talking about changing the rules from the COVID?
Yeah, it's going to be sometime in the near future, I'm not sure where, and this is something that we can actually discuss then.
Oh, your rules of procedure, I see, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that concludes the regularization meeting, and it's adjourned at ten, ten PM, and we now go to the CRA. And I'll call to the meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarper Springs on Tuesday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, at ten, eleven PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Lozus?
Here.
Vice Chair Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Tarpe?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Here.
Well, the first item on the agenda is an update on the Forbes property agreement.
Do you want me to handle that, Mayor? Would you like me to handle that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So as you know, I, I had provided Attorney Cole with the draft agreement in July of last year for comment. There had been a number of months that there was no activity on, on that particular agreement at all. In December, there was a meeting between myself, a Zoom meeting between myself and the city manager and Karen Lemons, and, and the applicant for this property, and there was some positive discussion, and we thought we were moving forward, and I still think that we are moving forward. I followed up on that meeting on December twenty-ninth, asking Attorney Cole if she has any update on the project, and she advised me on January the fourth that, that she was working on it. But they had a server network failure at her law firm, and therefore, was going to take a little bit more time to get, get that draft to me for discussion. Today, at one thirteen PM, I received another email from Attorney Cole, and I'm just going to read it. It says, "Tom, following up on my text, I'm rewriting my changes as our server network issue last week caused me some issues with this document. I was hoping to have it back to you today and still have that as my goal." I did not receive that draft, or a follow-up email. I did respond to Attorney Cole, though, and asked her to send me her suggested revisions, and that I would go over them with the city manager and staff and get back to her. So I'm hoping in the next couple of days, her server network issue has been resolved, and we'll get some type of draft for discussion purposes. So that's the only update I can give you at this point.
Mr. Trask, Mr. Mover, might as know the status of our, of this situation here?
Katie, Attorney Cole's a very good attorney, I'm sure she's keeping her client advised as to what's going on, but he was aware of what was going on when we had the Zoom call on December the eleventh, so approximately a month ago.
Yes, because I know that he's very anxious to get it going. So it's, it's, I mean, the ball is on their court, so we're waiting for them to.
Yes, until it gets to some point where you're tired of waiting, and then you move on to something else, but yes, but during our discussion of the Zoom call, I think that they were still very, very interested, there were just some issues that we needed to resolve, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Carr, do you have a comment, questions?
No comments.
Commission Tarpe?
I don't have any comments, sir.
Commission Donovan?
No comments, just thank you for the update.
Commissioner Tiqueras?
Nothing.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone online wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We move on to item number two, which is parking lease agreement, Court Street, and alternate years nineteen. Mr. LaCource?
Yes. If you remember, back in October, maybe, or whenever the meeting was, you directed me to look at some places for additional parking for downtown.
Yes.
This was one of the, this was one of the primary spots. We went into negotiations with Mr. Cosgrove and Mr. Cuskoudas, who have the lot, lot there, the lot on Court Street, behind the old bank. And I think we've come up with a favorable ten-year lease agreement. It's a real basic agreement, any of the questions of the legality part of the agreement, the city attorney did that portion, but essentially, it's twelve thousand annually, which starts off. it's $12,000 annually, which starts off at $1,000 a month. 3% increase per year for the 10 years. There's a provision in there to renew for up to five years. Basically, I also gave you a drawing where we're looking at, and again, this is just conceptual now, but probably in the neighborhood of 27 spaces that we would have in a reconfiguration of the parking lot. We've estimated that reconfiguration of the parking lot will cost us the CRA approximately $30,000. But this does provide an area. You know the Lemon Street, we just finished with Court Street, and this will add additional parking for us for activities on that side of Tarpon Avenue, also excess parking for downtown and events. So I think we worked out a very good agreement. Obviously, we'll have to change the date. This was supposed to come up in February. We got bumped because of the agendas. So we'll have to tweak the dates some to be current, not last month. But I think we've negotiated as far as we can go, and I'm bringing it to you for consideration for the 10-year lease and the CRA.
Mr. LaCoura, thank you. Congratulations. I think this is a fair agreement for the property owner and for the city. This parking will help us a lot with the parking issues that we have in downtown, but we still need to pursue the purchase of the Latour building so we can have our own parking in downtown. But also, we must continue looking for property for parking down at the Sponge Dog. Let's not forget that.
I've got direction on both of those. This is just the first one I'm bringing to you.
Thank you.
Of hopefully a few more.
Vice Mayor Carr? Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there's gonna be a lot more parking available now with this setup for this parking lot. And I know it's utilized today, but it's, this is just a formal, formal agreement to move forward with it from a liability standpoint and to secure parking in the future. So I think it's a good idea. I just have a question. So there's an ATM, I think, in the overhang. Has anyone discussed that with a banker, Mr. Cosgrove or Kuskudis, on what's gonna happen with that at all?
I know they're not utilizing the drive-throughs, are not gonna be utilized anymore, so I'm not sure the status of that ATM.
Okay. That's fine. And I mean, to follow up with what the mayor said, I would be interested to see if there's been any progress with the Latour property. It does seem like it is getting worse from an aesthetic standpoint, the quality of the building. And I'm not, I mean, if we need to start looking at eminent domain for that piece of property, I'm happy to start looking at that as well, but I think it's something we need to start moving forward on and looking, getting a little more serious in that area of downtown. Thank you.
Commission Tera Paney?
Thanks, Mayor. No, I just, I think city manager LaCoura, sorry, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Commissioner, I think he did as directed. This is available parking for the downtown and surrounding area. And my observation, just based on the math, is that that parking lot will cost us, at least in year one, obviously there's an escalator, but it'll cost $32 a day, and if you divide that by the number of spaces, that's $1.20 a space per day, which I think is a great deal. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission Donovan?
Yeah. Thank you to our city manager. Whenever the city's discussing leasing pretty much anything, I'm looking out for us maybe getting taken advantage of or trying to find out some of the asterisk material on these agreements, but I think it's more than fair, and I'm really happy that we got a deal done.
Commissioner Vaticiouas?
I do have some questions, Mayor. In reading the lease, I know it's $12,000, $1,000 a month, $12,000 a year, with a 3% increase per year through 2030. And was there, 3%, I think is a pretty healthy increase every year, given the way things have been running lately. There wasn't any consideration on the city staff's part to talk about a CPI, where it may be 1% or 1.5%?
That's just kind of where we came to, and that's what they had asked for, so that was their best offer back to me.
Yeah. Was there much negotiation in this contract, or?
Oh, yes, probably several months.
Okay. I think 3% is a little steep, but obviously, it's just me. The termination, I didn't see anything specific. Can we terminate this lease anytime?
Turn it over to the city attorney.
Yeah, the answer is no. We have to comply with the term of the lease throughout the lease. I mean, you can always go to the property owner and say, could you release us from this? And you can negotiate that, but at this point, no. Once you sign this agreement, you're gonna be leasing it for 10 years, just like they're committing it to be leased for 10 years.
Right, which is another problem that I have, especially if we're gonna be buying the property, Latour property in the future, and maybe doing some other things that may not provide a need for this, or there may be some other development opportunity that might come along. Of course, if that's the case, I'm sure the landlord would ask us to to give up the lease as well. So I would have hoped that it would have been something, not necessarily month-to-month, but two-month, three-month notice or something like that. I've got a problem with this thing being stuck with it for 10 years if we want it. And I read the terms, and basically, if we default in some way, we just walk away from it. They can find, the landlord can find somebody else, and if they don't rent it for what we're renting it, we would be stuck for what the difference is in order to give them the, I think that's the way it's written, that we would give them the difference in what they would have expected from us. The parking lot, I understand the $30,000 in the improvements, and I understand that that the improvements go to the landlord, except at the end of the lease, if they don't want the improvements, and we have to remove them at our expense and put it back to the original condition, which shouldn't be that much of a big deal with what we're doing to it. The question, is this the plan? Is this the plan that's gonna be done, city manager LaCoura?
No, this is conceptual right now.
Okay. That's fine, because you know me, I'm gonna check and double-check. And right now, it doesn't satisfy our land development code, just based on measurements. If you look at the two-way drive aisle, and I put this on my CAD system, right now, it's 22 feet, showing the land development code requires 24 feet. The single drive aisle to the right of that or to the east requires 16 feet. We've got 14.5. And so we're picking up, we've got a total of 25 parking spaces, as it exists today, based on an aerial, and we'll have 31 parking spaces when this gets done. And I'm okay with that, as long as it conforms to the land development code. And from my perspective, and the reason why I'm I'm pointing that, and of course, you can go through a variance, and you can do other things like that, like everybody else does, but if you go to item 10.2 in the lease, under government regulations, a tenant will comply, cause to comply the lease premises and all alterations, additions, improvements with all environmental laws, and with the requirements, including but not limited to all laws, ordinance, rules, regulations, ordinances of all county, municipal, state, which includes our own. So whatever we do, I want to make sure that we comply with our land development code, and that we're not creating some non-conforming parking lot for whatever reason. So is this plan gonna come back to the commission for approval?
Yes, we're gonna bring the final one back to you if you wish.
Yes. I mean, if this is conceptual, and I'm seeing a problem with it right now, I'd like to see the final one back.
Okay.
I mean, from my perspective, if the rest of the commission doesn't, that's, you know, that's up to the commission. I know I'm the last person on the totem pole with regard to comments, but this 10-year lease doesn't bother any of you, that it's for 10 years without any way of getting out of it?
I think the demand will be even more in 10 years from now for parking, so not really.
I mean, you do the math per space. I think it's more than worth it over the course of 10 years.
Space a day?
Yeah. I've got no problem with it.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Donovan?
I've got no problem with it. I think when you do the math of, you know, dollars per space, I think it's more than worth it.
Okay. No, it's fine. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got one other question, Mayor.
Sure.
City attorney and city manager, is there any limitation on, like, use of the parking lot during the day? It's not gonna be restricted during the day to, like, anybody could technically use it still?
Yep, there's no restrictions on that.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? No. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Okay. Mr. Jump, do we have any on Zoom wishing to speak on this item?
I would like to speak on this item. Please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just mention one thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that when you've looked at this lease, that you understand in 4.1, the city manager and I negotiated this so that you could use this parking lot for things other than parking. So for example, if you wanted to use it for special events, you have the ability to do that, and it's specifically written into the agreement. So I think that that was really helpful, too. It's not, cannot, not only just be used for parking, but if you want to set up something like an art show, for example, for the weekend, you have the ability to do that.
Great idea.
Okay.
Good point. Thank you. The chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiouas?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Paney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carr?
Yes.
Chair Allezis?
Yes. The item number three is a CRA Resolution 2020-06, Budget Resolution, CRA Fiscal Year 2021. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Yes, Mayor. This is CRA Resolution 2020-06, a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, demanding the budget for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021. That was reading CRA Resolution 2020-06 by title only.
Mr. LaCoura, staff report?
Yes, Ron Herring. Hopefully, he's awake and still on Zoom. There he is.
Yeah, I'm still awake. Yeah, good evening. A budget resolution 2020-06 is to bring forward budgeted items from the prior year fiscal year 2020 that were in process as of September 30th, 2020, but they weren't completed. The items to bring forward were approved and budgeted in fiscal year 2020, but not expensed in fiscal year 2020. On the cover letter, I've listed the projects to bring over to fiscal year 2021. These items were approved by the CRA board back on January 28th, 2020, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions. Anybody has any question?
Add one, just quick, on the grants for painting the buildings. I guess it would be the facade grants. Was there anything that needed to be rolled over in that, or? I may not understand how that works. If we've got the building code assistant grant rolling over, wouldn't have been the other grant, or is this one and the same?
This is in addition to the facade grants.
But the facade grants just gets carried over without the need of a budget resolution? Is that the way?
Well, this is already budgeted for $100,000 in the current year budget.
We have another amount in. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? None. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
The chair will obtain a motion.
It's not moved. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiouas?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Paney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carr?
Yes.
Chair Allezis?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number four, Direction on Clock Final Design. Staff report?
Yes, as you see from the memo from Mr. Jacobs, we're ready to order the clock. We've got the location of the clock on the end of Tarpon Avenue, on the property that we purchased. The simplest things we need that he listed was the dial style markers, color, clock accent, letter and logos, and he gave you some examples. We've already agreed on the four-sided. Most of the ones are black with a gold accent, but obviously, you can decide to change that. And then the several styles he's got in there, what the numbers look like, that would be a decision, and any logo, and the established date of the city, or anything you want to add to it. If you could just give us those items, we're ready to get that, go out to bid and get that clock ordered.
Thank you. What I prefer is the Howard replica, the four-phase clock with a black and Arabic dial, enhanced, easy to read.
Yeah, I'm also with the Howard replica, Seth Thomas, as a mayor, black color. I'm fine with the gold accent color. I think that looks good. There's additional, as well as a scroll work on top. I think that adds some additional character to it. I think that's important to include. I do think also, it says, "Custom header is available." I think it's important to put the City of Tarpon Springs on there, and established date, as an example, that's in the backup. So that would be the top part, would have the city name of Tarpon Springs, and then the bottom part would have the established date. One of the options it says is the dial can have verbiage and logos, et cetera. I'm not necessarily interested in doing a logo, but I do think it would be a neat thing to add on to the faces, the historic district, and then to other faces, Venice of the South, to pay homage to back in the historic times of when it was called the Venice of the South. Is that correct? That's the correct verbiage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
About the two?
So there's the four faces. I think two of the faces should say historic district, and I think the other two faces should say Venice of the South.
What color? What about the dial? What did you say?
Oh, Arabic.
Arabic?
Yeah.
Okay, with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Vice Mayor Tera Paney, what you wish?
So we're going the Howard replica, Seth Thomas is what y'all proposed, right?
Yes.
And we're going four-sided now?
Four-sided, yeah.
Mayor, you said two sides, historic district, and two sides say Venice of the South, right?
Correct.
Oh, okay. I see the Arabic. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I like that. And then were we gonna discuss where on the Hoffman lot we wanted it to go?
We can do that now or when it gets here?
Oh, okay.
I'm just concerned about getting it ordered for us.
That's fine. Let's order it first. I'm all about matter of priority, so. Order it.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on board with what we discussed, the Howard replica, Arabic dial, black color, and the accent be gold, and I would just really emphasize that I wanted to see the established date on there. I think that's a neat feature.
Okay. Commissioner Vaticiouas?
The accent eagle is on the face. Is that what we're talking about?
It's throughout portions of the clock. You can see, there's an example, I think on page two, on the left. When you zoom in, there's multiple accents on there that are gold. If not, I think all of it will be black.
Okay. Page two. Okay, well, that's fine. That's a detail. Black, gold, Arabic, Howard, I'm sorry, the Howard replica, is that correct?
Do you want to see that?
No, I saw that. I just didn't know where the, where would the eagle at?
So I think the eagle is right there.
In the face, yeah. And then the custom plaque would be there.
Custom plaque is on like the base, Vice Mayor?
So when we're, I didn't talk about the custom plaque at all. I talked about the custom header. So on the example we're looking at, it's E P G C C. It would be Tarpon Springs there. And then an established date would be below that where the established date is on this, on that clock as well. I didn't talk about anything on the custom plaque, but I would imagine that's something we could add.
I don't, I don't think we need it. It was just where the Venice of the South and where the historic district would be.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
But he gets it now, it's up on the face.
Yeah, okay.
You're okay with the header? You're okay with that? Yeah, no, everything's fine.
Everything's good.
And then as far as the specific location, that'll be determined at a later date?
After we get it.
Once we get it.
We all okay with that?
So just, just to read it real quick, we're having some gold on there, right? Or is it all black? Gold? Yeah.
Gold.
Okay, cool.
I do have one question, the pedestal.
It's hard to hear you, I'm sorry, Commissioner. It's hard, it's hard to hear you right now.
Excuse me. The, we'll decide how it's going to be mounted a later date as well on a pedestal, like that concrete pedestal at one of those towns. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Okay, are there any public comments on this item? Here none? No. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
We did receive a comment and it was from Ed Hoffman. That says the installation of new monumental historically designed clock seems redundant since Tarpon Springs already has a real historical clock recently restored crowning the old City Hall building downtown.
Okay. That's it, just one?
I'm sorry?
Just one?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Jump, do we have any, anyone online wishing to speak?
Anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time.
Bonny Otis Polias, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I just wanted to stress what Mr. Hoffman said, it does seem redundant to have another clock. And I would have you guys really consider, do we need it to say historic district or Venice of the South on there? I mean, our town has known with a whole bunch of nicknames and different trends and ideas. And we don't have them listed everywhere in town. I mean, look at the Golden Crescent, that is the bayou. So, and is this clock going to stay in the historic district? And you said it's going to be over at the park, but you're not sure where you're going to move it. So I'm just not quite sure on exactly where you're going to put it. And please think about those two letters because don't you have to go back to the historic society and agree with them to have certain slogans or certain sayings from the past presented in certain areas? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else?
And we do not have any others in attendance at this time.
Thank you. We need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carr?
Yes.
Chair Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you. Item five is direction on the railroad arm design. Mr. LaCoura?
Yes, this is another, another item we had talked about and we're getting ready, you know, we want to move towards getting this design and built. The two options that were given that we had talked about is a more traditional option. And we have a person in our planning division that made these depictions up just to give you a visual. One is the traditional railroad arm look. And again, these are just description, one color is the brown historical color. One is more the red color that you see at the depot. And you see on a page she gave where she got that color from, those are two options. Or we had talked about a curve, a sort of a curve sign that we have to design and meet the 14 feet. So it's just a real rough depiction of that. So if we could pick which style is more preferable and the color scheme, we can, we can go out and put out the bid to get that design and built for the corner by the depot on Tarpon and Stafford.
Thank you. I prefer the tradition of railroad arm, which is the option two, brown and white. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I prefer the traditional approach as well. And I mean, I would prefer that it would stretch over as much as the trail as, as possible, as allowed. I guess from a structural standpoint. And if it could go further, that's even better. From the color scheme, Mark, is this like a design build again? That, I mean, what's the approach that we would be taking for a bid processor? What's the next step for this?
Probably similar to go out and we have to do the engineering on it and then build. So probably it'd be the same approach unless you had ideas on a different approach.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, I think it was, should be the same approach. I'm just thinking from a design standpoint, it would be nice to see a design, like a professional designer do something with, I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure what other options there are, but I do like the traditional approach.
Yeah. Again, this was just rough by a, a person with the graphics to be able to see, but.
I appreciate that, that gives us a lot to look at. I have seen also the, a dark sign where it's like a black, a black backdrop with like either silver or gold lettering. And that tends to pop well as well on the sign. So I wouldn't be against something like that.
I've seen those two, yeah.
I think that would be a good option to look at at least. And then I understand what the mayor is saying with the historic Tarpon Springs brown background. I mean, it is a consistent theme in the, in the district. So I mean, to have those two options to look at, I would be happy to at least look at those options. Thank you.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Thanks, Mayor. This is another topic that we've been talking about for literally years. So I'm excited to see, I mean, Rodney Chapman was here, if that gives you an indication how long it was. So my first question is, is there, Mark, do you know with our agreement with whoever governs the train depot, the railroad looking arm that's behind what we're proposing to do?
Yes.
Is it possible to take that down?
We can check.
I mean, that I think would look a little cleaner.
Yeah.
So that would be preferable to me. I could go either way on the design. I'm just excited that it's coming together. Personally, I think I like the arched railroad arm better. And I can appreciate the gold and red just because that's what the existing sign at the museum looks like. But I think the brown and white is a little bit more consistent with some of our other navigational signs around town. So I think the arched arm, brown and white, and if at all possible to take down that old arm and kind of visually clear that up a little bit, I think would look really nice.
Thank you. Don, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for getting this back to us with the visuals. I think it's a nice presentation. I overall like the traditional railroad arm better. And I would definitely prefer option two, the brown and white scheme. My only note, and I know we'll get more into this as it moves forward, is just looking at the traditional railroad arm option two picture, the letterings between historic and Tarpon Springs seem a little bit flip flopped. Being that historic is big and bold, it's almost kind of overwhelming our city name in that design. So I'd probably, I'd want to see Tarpon Springs pop more than, you know, just having a huge all caps historic above it. But that's, that's my only note.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Commissioner Terpenny, which, is that old arm shown in the photo here?
So it's right here, see the old arm?
Yeah. You really want to take that down?
I mean, it does, I wish there was a way for us to incorporate it somehow. I mean, I, I don't.
Would you move it to the back, like by Court Street? Or relocated?
I mean, I, I think it's part of Tarpon.
Part of it, yeah. I mean, I don't hate it, I just thought that it would look a little cleaner if it, if it was gone. I actually started to pay attention to it a few weeks, a month or so ago when I knew that we were going to be talking about this just because, you know, here we are talking about putting a railroad arm, you know, and then there, then there is one. So, but it just doesn't have that cross feature, you know? That kind of hangs over the street, which gives us a little bit of signage and opportunity to advertise some things, you know?
Can we talk about that aspect a little later then?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Yeah, the, thank you. The, the traditional is fine, the signs, the consistency with the brown and, is it gold? Is that what we said, gold? And the only, the only question I have, and I'm talking about just me, and I've run into these situations before. If I'm coming down Tarpon Avenue, let's say heading west, and I want to make a left turn onto Stafford, I'm going to see those red signs or whatever, those little bullets on the mast arm. And it's going to kind of give me some pause to think of whether I can go down their way, that way, or something like that. And maybe we could, and I guess they're, they're painted right now, but maybe we could find some kind of darkened glass or something like that to put on there just to give an idea of the red, but not of anything that's illuminated to give some person the wrong impression. Of course, the police department could weigh in on this and tell us in their opinion whether they don't think there's anything wrong with it to have a red paint. That would be fine with me, but I'm just a little reluctant from a driver. And I've been caught in those situations. Do I, is it something that I can go down there or not? I guess is what I'm getting at.
Good point.
Yeah, I know the mayor's smiling. So, I mean, I'm serious. My wife says I'm too honest about things. She would go down there, you know, pedal to the metal, but I'd be reluctant, so.
Okay, seems like we have consensus for, four of us want the traditional one.
Okay.
Brown and white.
Brown and white, yeah.
It's going to be installed this week, right, Mark?
Yeah. Tomorrow.
You want a motion, Mark, or you're good with that?
We, we need to go to public comments, but you can.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Any, do we have anyone for public comments? I'm told it was empty. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
We have received a comment from Mr. Hoffman on this item as well.
Okay.
It says mass arm, the arch design is preferred. Color option one, red and gold if located on corner of Tarpon Avenue and Stafford Avenue to match the depot logo sign. However, given the member of crosswalk, I'm sorry, given the number of crosswalk and trail signals or signs at the intersection, it is preferable for the sign to be placed at the location of Tarpon Avenue and Ring Avenue extending over Tarpon Avenue as a gateway sign entering the historical district. At this location, option two, brown, white would match other historical signage. The sign option overhanging Stafford Avenue conflicts with the existing historic railroad mass and makes it appear that the entrance to the historic district is south on Stafford, which of course is not the case. And that is the only email we received.
Okay. Mr. Jump, do we have anyone online wishing to speak on this item?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
There's nobody in.
Nobody there, okay. We need a motion? Commissioner Terpenny?
Motion to approve the brown and white traditional railroad arm.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Chair Alhuzis?
Yes. Item number six is downtown tree and acorn light plan. Staff Report, Mr. LaCoura?
How might you present, be cognizant of the hour, so give a brief update of what you've looked at as far as this and for the board to talk about.
Sure, well, just give me a second, I'll get this, share the screen here. There we go. Good evening, everybody. Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. Back on November 7th, Commissioner Vaticiotes, Nick Marcus from Public Administration, Project Administration, excuse me, Tracy Wallace, the Parks and Parkway Supervisor, and Shannon Brewer, the City Arborist, and myself met downtown at Mir's Boulevard, at Mir's parking lot and walked the Tarpon Avenue corridor all the way down to Uwe Avenue. We're looking at the possible improvements with some lighting and some trees. What we have here is, I'll touch base on what we found, what we discovered along the way. Just bear with me, I'll get this going here. Okay, this section here, this on, on your map number one, we looked at the area here just in front of Mother Mir's Park with the possibility of adding a couple of trees right in this area, I haven't specified the trees yet. And also adding the possibility of adding a decorative light there. Couple of things we found when we started doing a little more investigation was this light and the trees, there is a signage, an old FDOT signage that states, it's just an informational sign, it's about Lutz and Tar, Lutz and going to Tampa. It could block that sign. It's an old FDOT sign, so I don't think it's, needs to be there. I don't think FDOT would have an issue removing it. The other concern we have is possibly some sight distance. Fact now that we have a crosswalk here at Hibiscus and a short run from the traffic coming down on Tarpon Avenue, it may be some issues. I don't think it'll be much of an issue, but I still have some minor concerns on that. So we might have to do a little more investigation on that. To add that light there, it'd be about $4,500. Lights are about $2,000 apiece. And of course, additional work with tying into some local power there. And of course, this is, these are very rough estimates at this time. To add the, the trees, these two trees in the section here, that would come to probably somewhere between 10 and 12,000. I know it seems a little high on that, but we're looking at using what they call a silver cell to start putting some of these trees along the roadway. I'm sure Shannon Brewer somewhere down the road can explain exactly what that is. I've got some photos in the back here. But it's an item that they're starting to use much more in the, in the trees, keeping the roots from migrating over into utilities and of course, the roadways and pushing up roadways. That's that section here. My approximate cost for this one section here, I said it would be probably about, about, about $18,000 to $20,000 by the time to get those, those tree wells in, if we go with the silver cell. Of course, if you don't use the silver cell, those, those costs will drop quite a bit, probably, probably in half. As we move down a little bit here, as you can see, there's some trees there. Again, as I wait till Shannon gets available, unfortunately, she's not here right now, out with an illness. But when she gets back, she can touch base a little bit more on that. The next sign down here, a little bit here is map number two. We have here a section of Stafford Avenue that runs south. Of course, it's between Tarpon Avenue and Lemon Street. Some of those improvements, we've already started. There's some brick pavers here, we've got completed on both ends of the trail here. We're also going to be adding some pots there, we'll be matching the same, same aesthetic looks that we have on the north side of the trail there. Those pots have been ordered, we're just waiting for them to be, to be shipped. And hopefully, next couple of weeks, we'll be getting them in. A couple of things, we looked on this area, it was actually down here by Lemon Street, the possibility of adding a couple of trees here and also a couple of additional lights. A couple of things we run into, right along this corridor along here is a 20 inch water line. There's also a six inch gas line heading down Stafford Avenue here. That is going to interfere with the installation of any type of trees. Don't believe they get in. I believe we can get the lights in. We do have some, we believe we have the space between the water line and the, and the gas line. But the trees will be definitely a hazard. So I don't, I don't know if they will.
For a second, Mr. Funchen, let me know after for a second. I need to ask for motion to extend the meeting.
Can I propose something, Mayor? May I propose something?
Sure.
We don't have the City Arborist available tonight. And this is a little bit more detailed than I think maybe the board would like to go into tonight as far as the time extension. Is it possible to defer this item until we can have our City Arborist and more, a lot of time for the detail?
That's fine, if you want to make a motion to that.
I would motion to defer this item to our next regularly scheduled CRA meeting, given the hour, the detail, and the lack